All right, so we are live. Madam Secretary, do we have a quorum?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess, so we have 33 on. And I have to check, but I'm sure we do. I'm sure we do, Ken.
Yeah, I count. I think everybody is here for my quick count. All right, so I will call to order special meeting 321 of the Wachusett Regional School District Committee. I am just momentarily pausing, looking at my iPad to my left, just to make sure. I know we're on a delay on TV. HCTV says that we're live streaming, so I want to make sure I see us on delay. Okay, we are on, so. So again, calling to order a special meeting 321, the Wachusett Regional School District Committee. We're operating remotely under the revised open meeting laws per executive order of Governor Charlie Baker. This is a special meeting tonight, so we have a streamlined agenda. The first item on the agenda is a discussion of the memorandum of agreement between the Wachusett Regional School District and the Wachusett Regional Education Association Incorporated. So in order to facilitate discussion, I would take a motion to authorize the superintendent of schools to sign the memorandum of agreement between WRSD and WREA, Second Amendment to the Memorandum of Agreement COVID-19 Closure.
So moved?
Sorry, no, member, we moved it, and it was seconded by Member Mitchell. So I will turn the floor to the superintendent.
That you mentioned.
Daryl? You're on mute, Daryl.
There you go. Okay, thank you. Can you hear me now? Okay, so thank you all very much. Just want to let you know, this is, this MOA relates back to a remote learning plan that we are putting forth to you this evening as a way of moving forward with our learning, remote learning experience that we've been participating in over the past several weeks. So the Commission of Education actually came out with some guidance around, you know, how we should move forward as a district. So working in conjunction with our teachers' union, our department heads, central office administration, our building principals, building level administrators. We spent many, many hours, you know, putting this document together to ensure that this allows us to move forward, gives us some guiding principles around what we need to do as a school in terms of our expectations from ourselves as well as expectations for the students. So I know I shared the document with everyone, or Rebecca shared the document with everyone the other day. And, you know, basically, it lays out what the guiding principles are. There's an overview. We have a nice definition associated with what remote learning is. And then we really define what the different responsibilities are for each particular group. And that's nice because, you know, over the past, you know, week, two weeks, three weeks, I have received emails from parents, actually received one earlier this evening, with concerns around the amount of work that students are doing in some of the courses. And what we've done is that we've put a cap on this utilizing the framework that DESI has set up, where students really shouldn't be doing any more than half a day worth of work in each particular day. One thing that I've noted from reading through some of the literature around online learning during this COVID experience is that many teachers are feeling as though they need to make up for the time that they're not actually with students. So they're, they're putting forth a lot of effort, but they're also putting an awful lot of work out there for kids to do. And that was one of the things that we were very cognizant of as we worked through this process. The way this is defined, you know, we break it up by job description, but then we come down to grade level specifications. And under each specific grade level specification, we have resources. We have the focus of the remote lessons. We have the length of the remote learning day. There are general guidance for the length of time students are expected to spend on each class. And those are a little different for the high school versus middle schools versus the elementary schools. We then have, let's see, feedback to students and then student grading. At the middle school level, grades six through eight, we also have the same general guidelines associated with each one of those items. We do the same thing with grades three through five and also grades K2 and our preschool students. So this is a pretty much all encompassing program of study that we've pulled together. We have been able to have some deep conversations with our teachers about, you know, expectations and how we're all trying to be a little more realistic about, you know, what we, what we can and cannot do as educators remotely. I'm like, you know, again, I wanted to thank Bob for putting a lot of time and effort into this. And Bob, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything to this?
I think you did a good job of summarizing it, Daryl. I didn't really have anything at this point in time, maybe when some questions are asked.
Okay, and I'm just trying to think, are there other items associated with this? Again, the number one thing we want to focus on is that we are putting some parameters around the expectations for, for learning moving forward. This, you know, the expectation right now is that school is going to be back in session on May 4th. Superintendent did have a conference call this afternoon with Commissioner of Education Jeff Riley. And we're expecting some type of decision from the governor either later this week or early next week in terms of some type of decision around whether or not the closure will be extended past the May 4th date. What's nice about this plan is this allows for us to push forward a plan. So if we do extend past the May 4th date, this, this does easily kind of translate into a longer time period. One thing I did want to tell you is that as we work through this, I will be surveying families next week, staff next week, just to find out how they're doing with this, what their expectations were. Are we living up to their expectations? Are there other items that we think we need to add to this, modify, change? Because again, as we, as we go through this process, anyone in education knows education typically moves at a pretty slow pace. And at the rapid pace at which we're working right now, we want to ensure that we do take time every once in a while to step back and assess what we're doing and how we're doing it with kids. So again, that will be forthcoming. We'll do that next week, and then we'll make any modifications moving from there.
I want to take a moment, a two-minute recess, because I'm not sure where we are with the streaming at the moment. So I want to give CTV a moment to catch up to us. So we're gonna take, hit a little pause here, okay?
It's coming through the TV in our house, Ken.
It's coming through the TV, but it's not streaming, so it's only in Holden that we're showing right now. And with social distancing, we can't just everybody go to your house. Party at Adam's house.
I could just put the TV outside. Everybody lines up along Shrewsbury Street. Six to 10 feet apart.
Okay, I do see us live streaming again. We are recording this. Barry Sklar is recording it, so we can post this to the district's website at the end of the meeting. Is that correct, Barry?
Yeah, it'll take a little while for the video to render and be ready, but as soon as it is, we can put it up. Yep.
Okay, I do see us live streaming as well, so it should be good. All right, Daryl, can you give just a brief summary of, of what you just said, just to catch us back up?
Sure, Ken. So basically, just reviewed the contents of the remote learning plan attached to the MOA, where it defines what remote learning is, what the expectations.
It'll take a little while for the video to render and be ready, but as soon as it is, we can put it up.
Okay, I do see us live streaming as well, so it should be good. All right. Daryl, can you give just a brief summary? Sorry, Ken, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Daryl.
Thanks. You know what? I had the Holden cable TV on in the background, so I apologize for that.
At least you know it's working.
Yeah, it is. That's why I checked. So yeah, again, just gave a brief summary associated with the remote learning plan, where we are in reference to expectations for students, staff, families. Also expectations around the various grade levels, high school, middle school, elementary, pre-K. Really thinking about how we tie this back to expectations from DESE. In reference to remote learning, I also said that this, this plan allows for continuity past the May 4th deadline, which could be extended by the governor either later this week or early next week, according to a meeting that I had with the commissioner, that we, the superintendent's had with the commissioner this afternoon. So, you know, with that being said, that's a real brief summary of what I reviewed earlier.
All right, so. So in terms of process, we have a motion on the floor to accept this MOA. I want to open the floor to questions I've been asked to, you know, before, that we should be following our bylaws. So I do want to go around and give people, each people, everyone, two minutes to comment. Doesn't mean you have to use those two minutes. So we'll just go alphabetically, so that people know when they're coming. So, Member Ayala, do you have?
Can you come down?
Do you want to start us off? Sure. Member Brown?
Hi, I just want to say thank you to the administration and teachers for working on this MOA. I hope that it is a working document that in the next week or two, that both sides can, can communicate. And if needs, things need to be tweaked, they can be tweaked. I don't really have any question or anything. I've read through it, and I hope that it can start as soon as possible.
Member Dennis?
Thank you, Ken. And, you know, first I wanted to also thank the administrators, students, parents, as we're in this uncharted area, and particularly to the teachers who I think are truly trying to adapt as best they can in this new environment and with the best interests of, of students and student learning heart. We're, I think, now in week five of, of school closures. And, you know, to track the evolution of kind of where we've been as a district, weeks one and two, I think there's a bit of a grace period where we're trying to figure some things out. Week three and four, I think that there's some, some experimentation, but perhaps a lack of some clear focus and direction. And now in week five, you know, we're presented yesterday afternoon with the plan going forward as attached to the Memorandum of Agreement. And while I think that this is a next stop in, in our journey and evolution for distance learning for this year, I think it can't be the last stop. And, you know, I, I think that point, and I think Scott, Member Brown alluded to it, comes to bear base in some parent feedback that, that we've received. And, and so based on my reading and the parent feedback, I would offer five areas that need to be addressed as we continue to evolve our distance learning. Number one, I think we need to be more ambitious with new learning. If schools don't reopen this year, which I think we would acknowledge is a distinct possibility, schools will have been closed for 13 weeks roughly, and that's about a third of the school year. And for us to consider that a third of the school year is going to be spent for reinforcing already existing skills, I think is, is tough, and I think that we can do better. In this current plan, I think we have a cap of about 30% new learning for grades three to eight and, and a maybe for essential skills for high school. And I, I would, I think we need to, to go back and readdress that. Number two is consistency. And while I think we start to lay out some roles and some kind of level, little bit of feedback there. Opportunity for consistency in terms of our methods used and the curriculum that we're accessing across grade levels. Number three is professional development. We need to have a process in place for retrospection and adaptation as we go through this. We need to be able to identify and have a process for being able to identify, aligning, and training for the best practices as, as we're varied, we're all over the place, and that's understandable. You know, we, we offer, and nor have we expected our teacher training to know how we do distance learning. And I think that different people are at different levels of that. And so we need to have a process in place for being able to bubble up those best practices. Number four is feedback, and I'm glad to hear that, that there's some survey mechanism that goes out. I think we should try to understand what's going well, what's not going well, what do we need to do more of? And, and we probably need to do that more than once. But also, we need to understand in this distance learning model, who's participating, who's not participating? And, and how do we intervene when we're finding that there are circumstances where people are not participating? And then finally, it's communication, and I think it's communication in particular at, at the superintendent level. And, and what I mean by that is, in this unprecedented time, people want to know where we're going. I don't think people need to know or expect that we have all the members. I think that on a very frequent basis, probably two or three times a week, we need to be able to say, and, and where are we going? What we're doing, where are we going? And I think it could be an opportunity for inviting feedback. So again, I appreciate that this is a process. It's, we know, no one expects that we're going to be there all at once. But I think we do need to have these components coming into place and evolving, and I think that we can do that. And, you know, if, if there are areas or there are reasons why we can't, let's identify them. Let's put them out there and talk about them. And, and if there's skills or, or help that we need, let's make sure that we're asking for it. I think everyone has, is coming from the same place where we want our, our children to have the, the best experience in, in light of the situation that we're all in. But I think that we can be a bit more ambitious in certain areas and making that experience a bit better. Thank you.
Okay, Member Gobert? Member Gobert says he has no questions or comments and is eager to move forward.
And this is Christina. Did you, did you want me to keep time at all?
Oh, yeah, if you can indicate people when they've, when they've reached two minutes, that would be great.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Member Gustafson?
Okay, I will try to be, I will try to keep it to two minutes. Okay. I find this to be a very challenging situation. Because while our job is to educate our students and we want them all to learn, we are in a situation where we know that is honestly not possible to do for all of our students right now because either of their special needs or the circumstances our families are in. So I personally am deeply conflicted by all of this. I'll just state that. That shouldn't be a surprise. I remain concerned about the ability of our families to access all this information, and the document actually alluded to that, in that, you know, some documents might be scanned. Well, if a student doesn't have a printer, that doesn't matter. If we scan PDFs, they can't print it. And there is not a plan to make sure students can get information other ways unless they are specifically requested. And I think that's only in the elementary section. So I remain concerned about students, even if you scan things, and if they don't have a printer, they can't access it. If they don't have internet, I have heard from a lot of families who are really struggling right now, who even have Chromebooks, but Chromebook and having computer in your house does not mean that you have the ability to equally access the information and the ability to complete the work, no matter how well out. Because our students and families are under an enormous amount of stress. You've probably heard from the same parents I have, many of them. So I remain deeply concerned that even if you have the technology, that our students are not able to fully access the learning opportunities in the same way across our district. And I also have some specific concerns about special education students. I know there's a lot of details. I won't go into all of them, but one of the, the global concerns is their time of their day. Because with all of the special services they receive, that, I don't know how that factors into the half day. So that's actually a question I have. Because all of those services alone could take up two to three hours of their time. And there's, I don't know if that's factored into that, so that is a question, I guess, for Daryl and Christine. And also, I think this puts a, still puts a very large burden on parents, particularly in the younger grades, where I think the phrase self-directed learning was even included in the K2 lessons. And there is no way a elementary student lower than, say, fifth grade can actually do work on, be expected to work without someone helping them and guiding them every step of the way. So personally, I'm very conflicted, because while I do want our students to learn, I also think DESI has put us in a very difficult position right now by requiring even enrichment activities when we know our students are not in a place to actually be able to complete them in any meaningful way. So I, I personally am very conflicted. I would also like to clarify legally if we're voting on the legalness of the document or we're voting on whether we agree with the curriculum within the document. Because I think those are two separate questions, and I would vote differently depending on that.
I'm not sure if we lost you, Malia. So Naomi, do you have, Naomi's number is our district council, since it was a legal question, I wanted to turn it to her.
This, this impacts mandatory subjects of bargaining, working conditions. And you as a school committee are the collective bargaining agent for the school district. Therefore, you have to vote to ratify this agreement. The curriculum issues, really, basic curriculum issues, not changes, but the basic delivery rests with the administration. So I would say you have to ratify this agreement because of your obligations under 150E. Does, does that answer your question?
Malia might be having technical issues, we can come back to her if she returns to us. Member Haber?
Hi, I really agree with Member Dennis. I was under the impression from our last meeting that we were really going to focus on power standards and to see it say that we may focus on new material and that, you know, a 30% limit was very surprising to me. I was hoping for, for much more. That's all.
Okay, Member Haynes?
Okay, I'll go through, go through these as quickly as I can. I just had four items. The first two are just to express thanks. One, just as we've heard to the teachers, to the administration for putting this together. This plan is going to be important, not just for this year, but I fear it will also be relevant next year as well. So the idea that this is, as was stated earlier, a working document to modify and build upon, I would imagine that's a good view. And the other thing I just wanted to, I wanted to mention. Today, Massachusetts got to a scary landmark, which was basically 1,000 people dead from this virus. And so what I wanted to say again was thanks to Daryl for having the foresight to close our schools as early as he did. Now granted, the state jumped in a few days later, but I don't, I don't know that he knew that was going to happen. And I would say that his decision probably came realizing that we weren't ready for it. We weren't ready for what was going to happen, we weren't ready for what we were jumping into, but he made the move. And when you look at what's happened, I would say that was, that was absolutely a smart and critical move and probably saved a lot of people from being sick or worse. So thank you for that. As I read the plan, my two questions are this. One, as it pertains to kids who have special needs or IEPs, I know we've had questions about Medicaid billing in the past. Is Medicaid looking at how this stuff is being billed or invoiced any differently than what we've done previously? And do we know what those updates are so that we can continue to bill in a proper way as we've been working on recently? So that's one question. The second question is, I saw that there was a point, I think the midpoint in Q4, where we would be looking, checking to make sure that the kids were essentially keeping up. The teachers were going to look to see if they were, been keeping up with assignments and whatnot. And that would be a measuring stick to see if they had access to the assignments. I think it's a good idea, I like that idea to have that checkpoint in there. But I'm wondering if we can do that a little bit sooner, because I feel like if we wait till the midpoint of Q4, you know, we've lost a lot of valuable time. I think that sort of evaluation would be more helpful if it comes a little sooner. That's it, that's all I got, thank you.
Daryl, before you answer, apparently we're still down on the streaming. And from what I get from Holden TV, it's not clear. It's definitely on the TV, it's just not on the internet. Barry is filming this and as soon as it's downloaded, he'll post it to the district website. Attorney Stoneberg, that fulfills our legal obligation for open meeting law, right? Okay, I just want to make sure because I'm not sure if they'll be able to get backup or not.
It does, as long as you make it available and you're tape recording it.
All right, Daryl, do you want to take those questions?
Sure. So I'll answer the second question, Jeff. I definitely say that we will take a look at, you know, when we actually look at quarter four. And that was one of the things that I had mentioned a little earlier, is that, again, this is a framework for us. We're going to assess it as we move forward. We're not going to be stagnant with this plan, this has to be a plan that is flexible. And it's a term that, flexibility and patience, it's a term that I'm throwing out to my principals every day because it's something that we all have to have, because it's so challenging in terms of what's happening in homes. But at the same time, we have to understand this is new for everyone. In reference to the IEP, the Medicaid billing, I do know that Christine has been advocating on behalf of pulling that together a little bit more. Chris, do you want to mention anything on that?
Sure, thanks, Daryl, and good evening, everybody. I am, I am in close contact with our Medicaid director. She checks in with me every day that she is assigned to work. And we are aligning our services so that we can bill. We definitely are concerned about getting in enough billing and the impact that that may have on our quarter four receipts. So some of the work that's being done around that is in relation to our ABA service providers and trying to determine how they can provide remote discreet trials that are considered medically necessary and therefore medically billable through this tele-model, remote learning model. And additionally, there was some, some additional requirements for speech and language providers to be able to do remote billing and remote services that are considered medically necessary and therefore billable through Mass Health. And that has been waived. In addition to that, our SLPs, many of them did already do the ASHA training so that they could do that work when we are ready to move forward in that area. So, and in addition to that, some of our counselors have also done webinars and additional training around remote counseling, if you will. And those are the areas of billable services that will impact our, our ability to get in enough information for quarter four.
And Daryl, if I could jump in to maybe answer Jeff's first, second question, the first one you answered. This is a formal agreement with the teachers here. What we have is we've worked with the principals outside of all this and they've been charged with tracking down all the students and making sure that they all have adequate access. So even though here we're just documenting two milestones in the fourth quarter, one is halfway through, one is near the end, the principals are charged. Then they've been doing that right now, checking in to see who has access and who does not.
Thank you, Bob.
So Member Gustafson is back. She had had a question before she got cut off about what is clarification of what we were voting on. I don't think she heard Attorney Stoneberg's answer and then perhaps might be able to, because there's two questions, there's our, our goal as the, our responsibility is the collective bargaining agent authority. And there's also our policy that we're supposed to approve new curricula.
Okay, I would say this is not new curricula, it's just a different way of delivering it. And you would be responsible for ratifying the agreement with the teachers because it involves a mandatory subject of bargaining, working conditions. But in terms of curriculum, there isn't a change in curriculum, there's just a change in the method of delivery. You're not introducing a new math program. You're keeping your curriculum and delivering it a different way to the students.
Malia, did you have any follow-up to that?
No, I'm sorry that I lost my connection right after I asked my question, because I, I guess, so technically we are voting on the authority to approve this, not the types of remote learning, et cetera, that is included in it.
You are voting on the collective bargaining aspects of this agreement. Wages, hours, terms and conditions of employment. You're, you're voting on the, it's a change in the terms and conditions of employment, and that's what you're voting on.
Right, not all of the details of the types of learning, et cetera, that's included there. All right, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so Member Ember? Bob? I see Bob unmuted himself. Bob may have Princeton connection issues, we'll come back to you, Bob. Member Christian Baum? Laura?
Okay, okay, sorry, I was trying to find the mute button, it's 14 different places, but the one I was picking, sorry. So I want to thank also the teachers and the administration for putting together this work. It is not easy work to do and given the circumstances and the speed at which we were having to develop these, these plans, sort of building the boat while rowing it is no easy task. So thank you for all the efforts and the time, the frustration, the heartache, I'm sure it was a bunch of everything. I would like to echo Member Dennis's comments. I think he outlined five major points that I thought were spot on. I couldn't have said it better myself. A couple of things that I would, I would like to note regarding consistency. You know, we are entering into a time of change and unknown. And, you know, as we are still progressing with this disease, it's possible that teachers, support staff, family members of those individuals will fall ill, need support and so forth. And to have a mechanism in place, and at the risk of overstepping here, I'd just like us to think about how the teachers, the administration may build in a mechanism to provide for consistency so that in the event that someone falls ill or is otherwise indisposed, that the team of other educators may be able to step in and, and help support in one way or another to then maintain a level of support for students within that teacher's classroom and so forth. So it's not clear to me how that happens with this agreement, but I would just strongly encourage moving forward with that in mind so that we can all best support and, and hold safe everybody. And then the one, other question I have about curriculum with, regarding the, the 30% number, I would agree that it's, it feels not ambitious enough, to use his words, to use Member Dennis's words. And I think that it's going to require, require us to be considering curriculum changes and a bridge program moving forward. And so, again, I just want to bring that to the conversation and make a point of where we are ratifying this agreement and it doesn't address curriculum directly. By putting in that number, it, it causes me pause because I, I feel that there is a curriculum change that we're also agreeing to here. That's all, thank you.
Member Ember, are you there?
Can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, good, maybe. So first, you know, and most important, my heartfelt thanks to the administration, to the faculty and staff, to families, you know, and actually to all of us as well. It's a bizarre time and, and people are putting in their effort and their thoughts and their time, and thank you. I don't have a whole lot to say other than I fully support voting for the memorandum of agreement. And I also second Member Dennis's cogent comments that, that, you know, we need to continue to fine tune things, we need to visit or revisit several times to figure out how do we make this better. And I also, in fact, believe that there is an educational component that, that needs to probably be discussed by Ed Sub as well in terms of, you know, where are we going, how's this working and, and all of that. But I support voting for the memorandum of agreement. And again, thank everybody for their, their efforts. It's just a remarkable time period and thank you.
Okay, Member Lavoy?
All right. I, I first want to echo, I think Member Brown had said it first in terms of hoping that administration looks at this as something that they'll reflect on and be able to have a fluid, fluid approach with the teachers. And that, that comes into really wanting to first thank the, the teachers that, you know, have really been putting in the effort over the last five weeks or so, as well as administration for, for getting the, getting input from all sides. I think it was Saturday morning of this past weekend that I, I reached out to Dr. McCall and asked if he could initiate having a survey out to, to parents. And I'm sure that Barry probably helped him in getting that out. But I think it was a matter of hours that that was out. And I think it, it shows an openness that we're, we want to have inputs from everybody because this is impacting everybody in different, different ways and the dynamics different. And that, that time's super important. I think that, that may tie into looking at a gap that might exist at the end of this year and how do we approach that? And perhaps some of it, it might be expanding some of the summer offerings to be able to leverage that time. And I don't know how that, that impacts everything, but I would like to see that as, as a look. And I would stress one of the pieces that I think Member Dennis had said. I do agree with everything in his five points, but the professional development aspect. I think this is an opportunity that you're going to be, we are going to be able to see where those gaps might exist in terms of leveraging some of the way that, that education's being delivered and to be able to support the teachers and the staff that need that. So I would encourage us to gather feedback regularly as people, as, as different people are using the technology to try to determine a best in breed approach. And then perhaps look at that from, in, in implementation across the district from a consistency perspective. That's all I got.
Thank you, Member Longbalil? Linda, are you with us? I see you took, you unmuted yourself. We'll come back to you, Linda. Amy, Member Chalowski?
Thanks, I, I do, I echo the thanks and the hard work and the acknowledgement that this is just a monster of a challenge for us to manage. I have a few thoughts. I do, as I read through that MOA and especially the remote learning plan, given the length of time that we have put into developing this, I just want to express that I wish that there was an opportunity for feedback along the way from the committee. Because I think that we all probably bring unique perspective that don't necessarily would have required action, but might have been a great reflection for administration. So I think that there wasn't as strong a partnership on development of this as I would have liked to see. I have a macro question. I know that Scott and Mike had talked about evolution of this agreement and the document. The document states it's enforced through the end of June. So I'm not entirely sure what type of reflection and modification we really have room for. So I'd be interested to hear thoughts about that. And then I had three brief comments. I do echo a lot of what has been said about reflection and evolution. Thank you, Daryl, for putting in a feedback loop and really focusing on getting stakeholder feedback as we have started from across the board, administration and teachers and families. I'd really appreciate it if we could get an update on what that feedback look like, looks like as we get into the next couple of weeks of this, so we could have a report from Central Office about that. the next couple of weeks of this, so we could have a report from Central Office about that. Um, and the two areas of concern that I have, just I don't think we're cl- uh, clear enough with regard to how this is going to feel for kids. At our last meeting, um, we had mentioned opportunities for help uh, in that there would be some sort of structure around how students can get support and get questions answered. I really don't see that in there. I feel like um, you know, one of my kids struggled with a question today and, you know, had to dig back through videos. There wasn't really a clear place where they could go to find their teacher. Um, I understand that there are office hours, but those felt in the language to be a place where a teacher was going to answer questions because it's really vague how they're making themselves available for kids. So I'm interested to see how that plays out, but I, I would hope that there was like, you know, time when a kid could jump on and just see their teacher and ask a question. And then the other one is to maybe look for getting feedback on and specifying a little bit more around the time, the timing and nature of feedback that kids are getting on their um, work. Because I think that, you know, that's one of the most critical aspects of a quality, like remote or online learning experience is understanding what you did wrong and getting feedback immediately so that you can attend to what you need to know or to do better. And I get that we're not necessarily giving letter grades, but just that narrative feedback or um, you know, opportunities for growth is important. So that's my most important couple of minutes of feedback on this.
Darryl, do you want to address some of that?
Sure, thank you, Amy. So um, I, again, I think the opportunity for feedback is probably one of the more important items that we're going to use as we move forward with this. Um, this, this document gives us parameters um, from which we can, can work. And we needed to define those parameters in order to move forward with remote learning. Um, I heard a comment, a couple of comments about the, the 70/30. But what's interesting is that, you know, again, today, uh, I was on a conference call with the Commissioner and he reminded all superintendents that um, you know, it's, we're, we're promoting remote learning and DESI is really promoting more enrichment than they are new learning.
Yeah.
With the exception that um, we can, we can move forward a little bit with some high school stuff. What we've done is we've looked at the high school, um, we've looked at our middle schools, our upper elementary schools. Uh, that, that information from uh, that, you know, that 70/30 number, that's information directly from um, I think the MSSAA, uh, the School Administrators Association here in Massachusetts. And with Garden, one of our principals is a, a principal, uh, leader of, of that group. And she, you know, we all brought that back uh, to the group and had those discussions um, a, a few weeks back. And, you know, ultimately, we want to ensure that we um, have the capacity to expand. But again, those are, those are our, our guideposts for us, so there's still some flexibility. I think um, there were a couple of areas in reference to timing and feedback. That's exactly what those office hours are for, Amy. Um, you know, the expectation is for them to be online, to have the capacity to respond to kids so that uh, you know, a student's not waiting around trying to figure something out. So they know they have a scheduled time from 10 to 12, or the, it might be at 9 um, to 10, or 2 to 3, whatever it might be. But we wanted to ensure that there was a two-hour block of time during the day when those office hours occurred.
And those are going to be available for live, like if I need you to jump on and explain something to me in person versus via email or via a chat in a discussion.
However they, however they work it out.
Okay, that's good to hear.
Okay, Member Longbalil, are you back? Linda? Okay, Linda is unmuted, but also unresponsive. We will turn to the students as I think they come alphabetically now, so uh, do our student reps have anything?
Sure, I have a few questions myself after looking through uh, the plan. So I was wondering how exactly would uh, pass or fail grades work if it's just four quarter four? Um, after reading through it, so like how would that be? I know it's one question that a bunch of students have had because they've heard rumors about uh, some of the possible options that were being considered. And so uh, what exactly would this mean in terms of grading? And on the transcript, how would that affect uh, GPA and graduation requirements? And then also another question that I know um, a bunch of the seniors have is how exactly would this affect us? If you, let's say, fail a class because of other uh, stuff that's going on with all the craziness right now? What effect would that have on graduation requirements? Are those more lenient now? Um, and then also um, is there a way we can make uh, there be one global platform? So after reading through, it sounds like there's a bunch of different ways that's, that uh, students and teachers can connect either like through email, through their websites, Google Classroom, things like that. But it's really hard uh, as a student to have 20 different places that I have to go to search. I have somewhere different for every class. And so it would be nice if we either all have a webpage or we all have a Google Classroom for every class. So that way we can receive the material in one place, uh, so that way we don't lose anything or miss out.
Yeah, those are the, most of the questions that I had. And I know that a lot of kids that I've talked to have like been wondering about like what's going to happen for classes that like, you have to have completed to move forward, like for kids in pre-calc right now, like what happens if we won't be able to finish pre-calc and then we're moving on to calculus, like I, I think some kids are worried about not like finishing their classes all the way. And like overall, I think that, like, since we're on like week three of remote learning, I think that's been going like pretty smoothly so far. Like, I think a lot of the teachers have like worked out some like the posting problems and like a lot of kids are able to do a lot of their work now. So I think that's, that's definitely been going better for most of the kids I've talked to.
Darryl, do you have anything?
So those are uh, great questions. Rihanna and Leah, thank you. Um, so what, I, I, I know one of the things we're doing is we're working uh, with uh, high school staff right now on uh, enhancing the plan. And again, one of the things that I talked about, or we spoke about today with um, the Commissioner of Education was really defining some of those same questions that you asked because uh, I think all seniors in Massachusetts are asking those same exact questions and how will it affect them? And the good thing to know is that you're not alone. It's everyone. They're all in the same boat and it's not just actually Massachusetts, it's everywhere. So um, we really have to look at that. There is some guidance that will be forthcoming uh, from DESE, but we're also looking at what we can do to get something out to you sooner rather than later. So I think after the last uh, meeting, I had talked with um, Principal Bando about uh, directing some of his staff to pull together a frequently asked question uh, worksheet. And that was one of the things that they're, they're still completing and we want to, we want to ensure that we get the right answers in there before we send it out to everybody, so we're not miss, not misinforming anyone. So uh, again, that will happen very soon and um, you know, we're also planning on getting some guidance from uh, DESI around, you know, the requirements and so forth that they've put forth. And again, um, just uh, this week they, or last week, um, the information came out around MCAS uh, that there is no MCAS this week. So they're literally going through and taking a step-by-step process uh, and looking at how all of this kind of works out. But those were great questions.
Darryl, could I interject here? I talked to uh, the high school and we, over the last week or so, and we've come up with a very detailed plan for how the grades are going to work. It's being rolled out to staff tomorrow. And you guys should all be informed of that probably within a day of, of, of that. Bill's going to answer some final questions about that with staff tomorrow. But uh, we've done a lot of work behind the scenes and we're ready to go in terms of a detailed plan about grades and what's going to happen at the end of the year. How's this going to be calculated? So we're right there.
Excellent. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Member Mitchell?
Yeah, um, so I don't, I think, you know, I think many of my questions have either been addressed or asked. Um, I, I just have two requests um, for the administration as we move beyond this. You know, I, I a hundred percent support this uh, MOA. But I think two big points that we got to make sure we address um, sooner than later is how do we manage the gap in learning? And I think, you know, again, not something to deal with tonight, but you know, we should make sure that the ad, the administration comes back um, you know, really at our next meeting, which is a month. Um, and then, you know, the other question I had, as Darryl said, this is more of an outline document. But in there, I'm not, I don't, I'm not sure I understand how people without access to either internet, printers, etcetera, um, who has the ownership to make sure they either have the documentation, the printouts, the, I'm, I, like I say, I understand. I, I understand this is a outline, but I am a little concerned because there are some fundamental gaps if people do not have some of the resources at home and not just internet.
So Ken, if you don't mind, um, Ben, I, it, it, that falls, that responsibility falls onto us. Uh, Christine and I were just discussing this today, um, where we would uh, either uh, do it. You can actually have um, packets printed out uh, through different companies right now. So again, one of the things that we want to ensure is that we're taking on that responsibility. I believe Bob men, mentioned it a little earlier. We are reaching out, principals are reaching out uh, to families if a connection has not been made yet in reference to kids uh, responding to teachers. And, and what we're doing is we're assessing where they're at, uh, what capacity they have to uh, participate in the remote learning activities. And, you know, how we can reach out and be flexible and assist uh, those families moving forward. Again, the expectation can't be that every child has a printer at home and they're ready to, ready to print everything out um, immediately. This is really, there has to be something where uh, we're flexible enough to be able to say, okay, if there's something that we need to be able to get out to families. How do we do that? First, identifying the families and secondly, you know, what those steps are and that's what we've been working on.
Thank you.
Okay, I think I'm back, right? Okay, um, just one thing that some, a member had mentioned is that uh, our student had asked about the um, I've lost, of course, the whole chat since I was gone, but our, our student asked about the multiple platforms and, and I don't think Superintendent actually answered that question. I just want to make sure, acknowledge that you had heard that part of her, the student's question.
Yeah, thank you for that reminder, Ken. Um, yeah, the, the multiple platforms, again, this is one of the things that we've uh, I think it's been alluded to a couple of times today, uh, as we have um, delved into technology as a district. Again, remember, um, you know, this has not been uh, something that we've had uh, the funds to support over the past, you know, 10 years. So we've really uh, ramped it up over the past three years in terms of what we, what we've been doing. Uh, but again, um, you know, I've, I've heard some concerns around um, you know, the management of passwords for even uh, second graders or fifth graders where you have, you know, they, they can't remember every single one of their passwords for RAS kids or Brain Pop or whatever the different activities are they were going into um, or platforms. So again, one of the things we're trying to do is look at how we can better streamline that. If it happens through Google Classroom or another uh, learning, learning management system uh, that streamlines everything for us. Um, we're, we're, we're looking at that right now. You know, again, Barry and uh, the, the tech people are doing a great job supporting everybody. Um, the turnaround time has been fantastic and um, I cannot say enough about um, how well they've been doing under his guidance. So um, again, don't let that get to your head, Barry, but uh, you've been doing a great job and I think everyone has really supported that. And now, as we move forward, our next steps are to look at, you know, how might we better adjust to this, this new reality that we're living in for, you know, the foreseeable future? And again, some of the things that I've been reading and seeing on TV um, are that, you know, we could be in a situation where we might be back in some type of uh, remote learning um, situation uh, in the fall or in the winter if uh, this thing creeps back up. So um, we have to be well-prepared in, in, in order to deal with that. Um, and we're not doing it on the fly. We are actually taking our time and doing it correctly.
All right, thank you. Um, and again, thanks Barry for what you're doing tonight as all, as well as the HCTV people who are, I know we're, we're overwhelming their system tonight, but we're, we are streaming right now. Um, Member Atmar?
All right, thank you. Um, a couple of things real quick. Um, first, thank, definitely thanks to the students for at least uh, mentioning and kind of raising up the question about kind of what the grades for the year are going to look like for um, if students got a 79 at the end of quarter three, what, like what would that look like for their final grade? So that, that definitely is something I know that a lot of kids are, kids are just kind of wondering about. And uh, certainly at least kind of look forward to hearing how, how we end up figuring that out and what we end up going with. Um, just, like I said, I know that a lot of people do get worried, at least at the high schools, but middle school too, I would expect, kind of worrying about that. Um, so certainly one thing, um, just really echoing the things that have already been said. Um, the unprecedented events here and one of the things that we're going to see is that this is going to exacerbate some of the inequalities that we have in our district, especially with it being such a broad, diverse district. Um, it's just, it's just going to happen. They're going to be exacerbated. And so one, one of the things I think um, that we're just, we're going to see, we're going to have to be cognizant of is that um, educators, when educators play bingo, like their free space is always differentiation. And so a teacher may, for any, any given day, they may have to differentiate their class like this. And maybe it's like this, like my hands are off the screen. Um, and, and that, that just may be, may be part and parcel for, kind of part of ensuring that every student's getting at the minimum of what they need. And for students that want more, they have options for them. And what that looks like, that we're going to, we're going to have to kind of figure that out. And that's, again, that's good, factors into the importance of that feedback that's been addressed, these um, after-action reviews, which you here talked about in the military, different flood venues. And again, it, when we're going through that, just let's make sure that we're focused on the processes, the things that are working, the things that aren't working. And it's not the educators, it's not what teachers are doing, what teachers aren't doing. It's things that are working and the things that aren't working because at this point, nobody really knows. We're, everyone across the country, across the world, across the world's kind of flying blind in this to some degree or another. So again, the, the importance of capturing what's been working well, what hasn't been working as well, so that we can get to what's working well is, that really, really can't be understated. Because that's ultimately doing the best thing is really what will kind of serve all of our students the best. Um, so yeah, just a few things I wanted to hit on right there, so thanks.
Let's go. Uh, Member? Awesome, are you there?
Yep, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear and you cut up with my name, so I wasn't sure if it was me.
Okay.
Uh, basically, I'd like to reiterate that I agree a hundred percent with what Member Dennis brought up and all his points. Um, I really appreciate the, you know, our student representatives um, concern about learning new material and the grading that they're going to receive. One question I'd wanted to highlight in this document that I noticed was, it stated, um, if I can get it up. It stated that all educators will communicate learning opportunities for students to participate at home. However, these experiences should not introduce new concepts and skills, um, for exception of AP students. And I, I'm kind of concerned about that clause because I checked with teachers and um, and parents from two different districts, from Westboro and Shrewsbury, and according to them, the teachers are teaching new material and have changed their curriculum to accommodate for this remote learning. So what my concern is, I understand that we are, and I totally understand all the concerns that have been voiced about how we want, you know, people to have, you know, equal access to internet, to printers, to whatnot. But compared to the similar, like nearby um, you know, c- c- communities and districts, I'm, I don't want our kids to also fall behind. So that clause, if I'm understanding correctly, is a little bit of a concern to me. Um, I, I don't know exactly how that could be solved if it's uh, based on, I know it's, a, a lot of this is based on if a child wants to participate. But is there a way we can have children who do have access or who do want to be involved or who do want to excel to be given those new learning opportunities that they're not missing, like Member Dennis had mentioned, 13 weeks, which is a third of the whole school year? And I, I, uh, when that clause, uh, like I said, I reiterated, I, I confirmed with teachers of Westboro, Shrewsbury and the parents that that is what their districts are doing.
Um, Darryl, you can respond to this, but I think the confusion might lie in that we got the first MOA and then later we got and then later we got sent the earlier MOAs, and I think that language is in the earlier MOA. But, but Daryl, can you talk about that?
Sure. Um, so, um, Aspen, that's a great point. Uh, you know, when I'm, you know, when we're thinking about this, uh, we're looking at remote learning as taking on the, the capacity of adding new learning experiences for kids. So we're moving away from enrichment, uh, especially at the middle school and the high school level, um, and more toward new learning. So we should be aligned with Shrewsbury, Northboro, Southboro, um, Nishoba, those communities. Uh, we actually, uh, took a look at a couple of, um, some of their information that they had already put out. So, uh, some of what we have in our documentation is actually, um, actually draws from several of those, uh, of those different school districts that, that you mentioned.
Okay, I, I mean, I know this might be too much, but I'd really love to see, like, what they decided as their policy and how ours compares, uh, you know, side by side. So I just want to do our kids' justice, along with everyone else.
I agree. That's, that's why we're, that's why we're here, because we want to ensure that our kids get the best possible education they can get. So, um, you know, let us, again, you know, if you look at the, um, remote learning plan, we're, we're pretty, um, on target in terms of what we're doing now with, uh, with our high school students and, and moving forward. So, um, I feel as though we should be in a pretty good place ultimately.
Okay, thank you.
Um, going forward, I did kind of hear that just process-wise is the request for information. So if Downs, if, if the superintendent has the opportunity to share some neighboring districts', um, plans, I think that would be useful for the committee to, to see. Member Smith?
I'll pass on my time.
Okay, member Weeks?
Hi, um, so a few things, um, and I wanted to first thank everybody, the teachers, the administration and the staff, as others have said, for putting this plan together. Um, and I guess some of my frustrations tonight kind of come on the opposite end of what many members have said. Um, I firmly believe there should not be any moving forward with the curriculum and to continue with the enrichment process. And just to remind the committee of a few facts. Um, so I looked up earlier today on UNESCO, right now, 91.4% of the globes, so Earth's, children are out of school. So that's 1.5 billion students who are not in school right now. Um, and also today, um, I think many of you might have seen that LAUSD, so the largest school district in the country, is closed for the rest of the year and none of their students will fail. So I think right now for us to say, because neighboring districts may be doing more, I just want to remind everybody that since almost 2 billion students are out of school, nobody in Washington is going to be behind. Many of our students are facing unsurmountable trauma at this point, um, with parents who are on the front lines as essential workers. Many of our students themselves are essential workers at grocery stores, at Dunkin' Donuts, at other places that are operational and working 40 to 50 hours a week. Um, many of our elementary students are having crying meltdowns because it's just really challenging for them to be away from their classmates and they don't really have the words to put those emotions into a place that really makes sense. Um, I know for myself, we are now out of ink, um, having elementary students. And Amazon told me it's going to take three weeks for me to get more ink to print the worksheets that my students need. Um, they're seeing as they're in first and third grade, they're not comfortable typing into PDFs and they really need things to be printed. Um, and I was, you know, we have a printer, it's right next to me, um, but I ran out of ink in eight days of printing out their materials. Um, so I think just really moving forward, we need to be kind to ourselves, kind to our parents and kind to our teachers, um, and really realize we are in a very unique situation, um, and we're doing the best, very best that we can. Um, and to keep in mind the guidance of Los Angeles Unified School District, um, I think it would be a very, very big disservice to our students if we do not understand their at-home circumstances to be failing them, um, in any stretch of the imagination. Um, and that we need to really just concentrate on the health and wellbeing of our students during this very challenging time.
Okay, thank you. Member Woodland?
Hi, um, thank you, member Weeks. I, um, wholeheartedly agree. Um, that was what I was planning on saying too, um, although you put it much better than I was. Uh, when I heard discussion on wanting more than 30% new learning, my stomach dropped, I have to be honest. Um, crying meltdowns from elementary school students? Yes, ask me how I know. Um, we have to remember that there, that this is a diverse group of learners across the district, age, age ranges and everything. Um, 30% more of new learning was already sounding like a challenge, maybe one we could meet, but already a challenge. Um, we already have teachers who have been pumping out work, ideas, trying to meet our students in any way that they can. Um, you know, I understand the concern about losing pace. Um, it's something that fills my worries day after day of what gaps are widening that I don't even know about because we can't be together. Um, so thank you, member Weeks, for expressing that, that concern. Um, I, that's my main comment that I wanted to make. Um, the other question, uh, I have two, two. One is, I think, a longer-term question that probably cannot be answered tonight, um, and that is about what the plan is for whenever we do reopen in the fall, um, you know, after this, uh, disrupted quarter four. What is the idea, uh, for altering curriculum in the fall, altering teacher plans on the amount of review? Whether we're out for, um, just this period until May 4th or from May 4th until September or later, whatever the mystery is. Um, the kids who are coming back are going to have way more than summer slide going on. Um, there's going to be the emotional turmoil as well and impact. Um, so looking at how that impacts the new learning that will happen at the beginning of the year, the, the review and the new. Um, so that's my, my question for the future is, what are you looking at to prepare for that next crisis in, if you want to be dramatic? Um, the other question I had was about the pullout services under this, um, MOA. Um, and just to clarify what the baseline is, not the ceiling, but the baseline for what the students will have, uh, access to during this portion of remote learning. Um, and also to follow up on member Gustafson's question about if, um, the students are receiving these pullout services, you know, they could easily eat up two or three hours out of their day, how does that relate to then the classroom portion of learning? Um, and I think those are, um, those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Christine, do you mind jumping in on these?
No, Daryl, not at all. Um, I just, I, I remembered that, um, Malaya had asked a question also about the, um, the service hours, the related service time. Um, I guess we need to remember that none of the services for any of our children are being provided, um, as they are described, um, in public education. So nobody is attending school for the full day at this time. None of our students, um, are getting their IEP services that are described on their IEPs at this time. So what the, the, um, the directive to our related service providers is that if you have a student on your caseload, you will provide a lesson for those students, but that that lesson will not necessarily, um, correlate to the amount of time that's described on the IEP. But yet will attend to the goals and objectives that are on the IEP.
Um, if I could ask a follow-up, so then what would be the, um, I guess the minimum expectation? I know that we can't ask for, you know, 45 minutes, three times a week or anything like that. That's not going to be realistic, but what is the minimum that you're looking for for, say, the SLPs or OT or the school psychologist and et cetera?
Um, so I asked for my providers to think at, at least, um, to think around half of the services. Um, now, of course, that's dramatically different for, um, many of our students who those remote services can't be fully implemented. So, um, so it, it may be more practical if you're looking at an SLP lesson versus, um, ABA services throughout the school day. Um, so that's where there's, uh, you know, a real, um, impact for the kind of learning that we're in, I would say. But all of the providers should be providing a lesson for students to engage. We have recently, um, engaged with TeachTown, we've re-engaged with Everyday Speech, um, and some really, uh, robust online programs that will help support, um, the activities and lessons that we are pushing out to families, um, for them to, um, to have access to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Rio?
Um, I guess coming last, there's not a whole lot more I can add to that. Um, you know, I, I guess my only comment is that it feels a little bit like we're not necessarily leading the way, and I would like to see us do that a little bit more. Um, we seem to be the last district coming to this conclusion. Uh, beyond that, I do think we should consider this a living document, you know, continue to make changes as we see fit and as, you know, Dr. McCall and the teachers come to agreement on and bring to us. Um, I think that's absolutely necessary. That's all.
Thank you. Not last, um, so, uh, member Ayala, I know we passed you. We'll go to long, believe, member Longblea after that. I have a really brief comment. Uh, member Ayala, do you wish to speak?
Uh, yes, please. Um, so I, I just want to say, um, I believe we definitely needed the first two weeks to coordinate and, um, I really believe it, it really helped organize the plan that's, you know, coming into play now. And I, I thank you to all the administration and the teachers for doing that. So I'm pretty much echoing what everybody's been saying. Um, and then I also totally agree with, uh, member Weeks, member Woodland and also Malaya in saying, um, and being very, uh, real about, um, as a parent and, uh, committee, trying to do what's best for our students. Um, navigating online learning for students that have special needs or navigating elementary school students is, it's very time-consuming, it's tough. And I know other parents at home, um, with children five and under, um, myself included, and then helping us, your student learn online and navigating online, it's, it's tough. So I totally echo what, what member Weeks, uh, member Woodland and Malaya are saying. Um, I do, I do worry about, um, once the work becomes required, I worry about that. Um, I believe that is going to put a lot of stress on families. Um, there's working parents that are also trying to navigate all this at the same time, and I worry about all that. Um, so I really, I think, I, I, I'm just not sure how it's all going to play out, especially if families aren't able to put their little ones in daycare, go back to work, and then they have to help these little ones with online learning. It's just, I don't know. I, I don't know if it's more of a comment or a question to be answered right now, but, um, definitely appreciate everything that is in the works, um, to help these kids, but, um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Member Longblea, I think we got you cut off again last time. Did you have something to add?
Yes, I do. Uh, can you hear me?
We can.
Good, thank you. So I just want to thank the administration and the teachers' union and everyone involved for putting together what I thought was a really thoughtful and, and detailed plan. Um, I really do understand the concerns raised by, uh, members Weeks and Woodland and Ayala. Um, but even with the challenges that it poses for the teachers, the parents, students and everyone concerned, I think it's a positive step forward and, and, and it's just important to, to be flexible and to try to understand the challenges that everyone is, is dealing with as we, as we try to help kids move forward in, in learning, um, as best we can. Um, as you know, my computer access has been a little challenging tonight. So please forgive me if I'm repeating a question that's already been asked. Um, my first question is how teachers are going to coordinate the work that, uh, they assign to ensure that as a whole, the work, um, in total is within the required time limits? That's my first question. Then I have a, a quick second question.
Can you put your second question on the table and then Dr. McCall?
Sure, sure. So following up on the concerns about quarter three, and again, I, my computer lapsed at that moment, but, um, my second question is whether a student could do some additional work for extra credit if they received a poor grade in, in that quarter, quarter three?
So let me answer your first question. Uh, so teachers have, uh, blocks of times, uh, when they, when they are to work together. So principals, uh, will be, um, ensuring that grade-level teams or, uh, departments will be meeting so that they're not, um, you know, taxing, uh, or overextending the amount of time that, um, we have allotted for student learning at this stage of the game. So, so that will happen, uh, with them. Um, reference to your second question, it's a little more challenging, Linda. Um, we haven't necessarily had a conversation, uh, about that with middle school principals or, uh, high school, or, yeah, the, the high school just in general. Um, it's something to take into consideration, uh, especially, um, with the extenuating circumstances, uh, in which we are all living right now. Um, so, um, Bob and I will have a discussion with, uh, our principals about it, uh, later this week when we have our, um, PLT meeting.
Thank you. And I, I want to echo what, uh, member Young said about how we should treat this as a living document and, and always be engaged in continuous quality improvement as we move forward. Thank you.
I wholeheartedly agree.
Thanks. Just taking my turn as, as a member, um, again, what Mike Dennis said definitely, you know, it has to be a living document, we have to get that input. Um, I, I worry a little bit about the ceilings in here, that it might be read as this is the average amount of work that we're expecting, um, whereas for kids who are, have issues, whether it's just learning in this environment, whether it's what's going on at home, whether they have learning challenges, that, that those kids are going to be working a lot longer. So I hope that from your office down, that there's clarity of expectation, that if it's a ceiling, it's a ceiling, it's not what we think the average, quote-unquote, average kid, which is, doesn't exist, right? It, it's going to find, because I would really hate for us to be putting, you know, three, four times amount of work onto these kids as, as these are because of perhaps the fact that it's hard to, for, for us to see, like, into the household of, of what it is. And there could be some expectation that, hey, if you work on it for two and a half hours, you should just stop, right? Um, e- even if, if you're not done, I, I don't know.
Well, a- and again, I, Ken, that's a, it's a good point, um, that, that we've discussed, uh, at length, uh, with our building principals and, uh, they've discussed with their, uh, their teaching staff. Um, a- again, we're, we're always cognizant of, I mean, we're not in the homes. Uh, there was an interesting, not an interesting article, it was kind of an enlightening article, uh, that was in the New York Times today, uh, in reference to, um, kids wanting to be back in school. So they actually, they interview kids from all around the country at, um, uh, all different ages, and they basically get quotes from them about, um, how they're doing at home, how the work is going, how challenging it is. Um, and, and, uh, you know, one of them just said, geez, I, I just really wish I was back in school. And I think many kids are probably in that same situation. So we're going to do everything in our power to ensure that, um, we're being flexible and we're being supportive of, of those students and those, and, and those families, um, where, uh, the, the timeframes might need to be looked at a little more closely.
And also just to echo other people's comments about making sure the teachers have the PD time available to them to be planning for how they'll have to adapt the curriculum, uh, next year. And, you know, as we drift later in our agenda, and I'll put my chair back, back on, we will need to be thinking about how we, as a committee, are monitoring if there are changes to the curriculum next year, those, those changes to the curriculum. Uh, before we take a vote, we've gone around to everyone, I think. Does anyone have anything new to add?
Can I ask questions? This is Malaya.
Yeah, Malaya?
I, I lost my feet a couple of times. So this may have been asked, answered earlier, and I apologize. Um, one of the questions, comments that I asked earlier was about the special education- Um, one of the questions, comments that I asked earlier was about the special education. Um, students and how their service time factors into the average day, the day limits of half a day. Because that time requires quite a bit of time if they're receiving services and having to do extra enrichment work. Um, or they're getting OT or PT or counseling, and how that factors in. Because I know for some families, it's, it's, they're a little unclear. So I wondered going forward, how, if that was addressed. And I apologize if you answered that earlier and I just missed it.
I think Christine Dibba can use, Daryl, can you summarize what uh, what that was?
Sure. So basically, uh, Malaya, because this is not a typical school day, the grids are not followed in the same manner. So the expectations are, are not that, that we're going to be following the three times forty-five in the, in a A grid or B grid.
Oh, I understood that. It was, it was not regarding that frequency, because that was clear in the plan. It was the fact that the time it requires the students to do extra work in their IEP or linking plan. Is additional time that the average student doesn't have, it's above and beyond what's required in completing their typical coursework. So that was what I was trying to differentiate. Is that included in the half day, half of a typical school day hours? Or is it expected to be time beyond that?
Right. So Chris, uh, did you want to talk about that a little bit?
Sure. Yes, thank you, Daryl. Thank you, uh, Malaya. Um, so our students who are getting linking plans um, should be getting uh, those linking plans should contain. The curriculum that is modified or the adaptations that they need in order to be um, in order to complete the activity. So it already should be modified and accommodated for the amount of time. Um, additionally, some of our students who get C grid services, whether that's from a related service provider or from a special ed teacher. Again, those assignments should be modified for time so that um, they're not um, laboring in, in a way that feels excessive. That's absolutely not what we want at all.
So it's supposed to be included in that somehow. Okay, thank you.
Think it just said that Ken left the meeting.
I'm back, uh, yeah. Uh, the little microphone thing, and I hit the, the second time I've hit the little. Thing instead. Um, so does anybody have any new comments before we turn to vote? Okay, so seeing none, the motion is to authorize the superintendent of schools to sign the memorandum of agreement between W R S D and W R E A. Second amendment to memorandum of agreement COVID nineteen closure, we'll take it in alphabetical order. Um, Rayala.
Ayala, yes.
Brown.
Brown, yes. Dennis, yes.
Doc Gabat says yes. Uh, Gustafson.
No.
Uh, Haber?
Yes.
Haynes. Gay Haynes says yes in the chat. Ember. Remember Ember? Ember says yes in the chat. If people can't say it out loud, that'd be better. Kirshenbaum.
Kirshenbaum, yes.
I heard that is yes. Um, Long Belial. Mitchellowski.
Yes.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Atmar, yes.
Atmar. Silva.
Silva, yes.
Smith, yes.
Weeks.
Yes.
Woodland. Young.
Young, yes.
Mills, yes, so that passes. Okay, the next item, I got everybody. Anybody, does anybody, I think I did. Um, next on the agenda is discussion of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty calen- school calendar April break. Um, I will put a motion to this, or ask for a motion, I won't put a motion. I'll ask if anyone wishes to. Move to change the April calendar such that. Hold on for one second. Uh, take a may, but we'll take, take, if anyone will make a motion to change the April calendar such that. Tuesday, April twenty-first through Friday, April twenty-fourth are uh, in our learning days as, as part of our academic calendar. And direct the superintendent to negotiate and sign on our behalf any MOAs required to facilitate that change.
So moved.
Sorry, who moved that?
That was me, Jeff.
So Jeff, okay, so Haynes made it, Mitchell seconded. So Superintendent McCall, would you um, discuss this?
Sure, thank you, uh, Chair Mills. Uh, when we're um, looking at uh, the April break. And first, first foremost, foremost, uh, thank you for supporting uh, the remote learning plan and the MOA in order for us to move forward. I have a lot of documentation I need to send out uh, this evening and tomorrow morning to families uh, to, to prepare them for this. And um, I'm sure the teachers and the, the students are really happy. Uh, you know, one of the things that we looked at was just the continuity associated with uh, the remote learning plan. And we felt as though it would be important for us to um, really remove April break. Have the continuity associated with this week, next week, moving forward, so that we didn't work for a few days. And uh, take all of next week off uh, for the, for the students. Uh, so that's the basic premise of this. This puts us in a situation where uh, school would end on June twelfth, uh, according to the hundred eighty-fifth day of school. And um, it, I, I think what it will ultimately do is give us uh, the best possible um, outcome in terms of. Continuity and consistency for um, you know, remote learning to occur over the next several weeks.
Uh, can you talk about the surveys that were sent out, Daryl?
Oh, sure, I apologize. So uh, I did have the opportunity to um, send uh, first and foremost, thank you to Heidi Leahy, President of W R E A. She did um, survey her members uh, on Friday evening or Saturday. And it was um, an eighty-twenty, uh, eighty percent in favor of um. You know, eliminating April break. Um, and I sent out, and thank you, member Lavoy, for um, reaching out to me Saturday morning. And uh, we were able to get that out during the day on Saturday. And uh, again, the numbers uh, were about eighty-twenty as well, in terms of uh, families wanting to uh, eliminate April break. Um, and, and move forward. So uh, it, it was interesting in terms of the, the numbers, they almost came out exactly the same.
I do want to give members an opportunity to talk about this. I hope maybe we can go through this one a little faster, but again, I'm not putting a requirement on that. Let's just do reverse alphabetical order. Member Young, do you have a comment?
No, no comments.
Uh, Woodland.
Um, yeah, I just have a couple. Um, one is just, I'm curious about how many families were um, able to respond. Um, and the other question is about if kindergarten will still end earlier than the rest. If, if we forego April break. Um, and then I guess I'm part of the twenty percent. I, I feel like that, having that break to take a collective breath would be nice. Um, but those, my questions are about the number of family responses and kindergarten end date.
So I had a little, little bit of a tough time hearing you, Linda, but I believe the first question was around the number of family responses. Uh, I, I believe, and Barry, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was around five thousand. Yeah, there it was, five thousand fifty. Um, so that was the total number. Uh, in reference to uh, the kindergarten dates, we'll definitely have to talk about that to look to see how that works. Uh, you know, one of the things that we're, you know, all of this i- is really dependent upon, oh, perfect. All of this is really dependent upon us uh, having the capacity to come back into school. Uh, you know, look to see what we might be able to do or not do. So um, that is on our uh, kind of tickle file of things we need to uh, take a look at. And I do appreciate your um, concern around the, the break and so forth associated with this. I think um, a lot of families um, are navigating, you know, challenging new waters associated with being at home all day long. So um, uh, we're cognizant of that and we appreciate it.
Remember Weeks?
Um, first, kind of tongue in cheek, but thank you for reverse alphabetical order. That's always sitting here waiting for my turn, but I just want to thank you guys for putting out the survey. Um, I've had my own thoughts on the matter, but I really want to give voice to the teachers and to the families and to move forward with what they want. Um, and so I'm really happy to support this motion and happy to um, kind of continue that continuity with the curriculum. Um, maybe just put a feeler out there for teachers and administrators that if, you know, a family is, you know, taking a vacation this week. I don't think they can really go anywhere. Um, but just to, to be careful with um, overloading kids. And letting know it's okay if they can't finish everything.
We'll come back to Christina. Uh, member Silva.
So um, I have to step away for two seconds, but we're commenting on the April vacation time.
Yep.
Yep.
So uh, my concern is, and I think we've received, at least the school committee received a lot of emails. Uh, you know, concerning April vacation. And I have to say, I'm in agreement with some of those concerns that were voiced by the parents. Uh, and some of the concerns and, and points that were made were the kids are finally getting into a routine and learning this remote learning process. And we already had two weeks where, you know, it took us time to get ramped up and start this process. So I, I, I agree with the parents that emailed us, and there was many parents. Um, to continue on and not necessarily, because a lot of the stuff we are sharing and doing is uh, voluntary. And allowing students to either, you know, participate or not participate willingly. So I don't believe that it's going to necessarily take away from those parents or those students that want to take the time off with whatever they were planning. Uh, but also gives the rest of the students uh, that continuity. And that's what I have heard from some parents, uh, from special ed parents also, saying that their kids have gotten into, into some continuity. With their special ed teachers, with their counselors, uh, and, 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 and for other students. And so I would, I would hate to, I would hate to stop that at this point, because the kids love seeing their teachers. I think it's a break in their day, um, especially for their emotional, not just the learning part, for their emotional content, continuity. Uh, I mean, I see my own kids get excited when they know they're going to have like a video Zoom call with their teacher, where they're seeing all their, while their classmates together. Sharing an activity and, and, and participating in it. So I would, I would really encourage um, going forward and, and teaching through April.
So just to remind members, that is the motion on the table, uh, is that we are making the motion to make April twenty-first through April twenty-fourth, uh, school days. Uh, member Smith, are you back?
Yes, I'm here. So I didn't hear you call me before, and it was my turn, but I didn't hear you call. So first, I appreciate having the, the data to be able to make an informed decision, and I'll be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Member Atmar.
Thank you. I appreciate the uh, what the district's done to kind of take the initiative to. Kind of make this change or to, to be uh, uh, amenable to make this change. Um, me personally, as a parent, I think it's the right thing for us to do. Um, and then from what I've heard in my role as a school committee member, both from the educators as well as the survey of all the parents. Um, seems to reinforce that as well, that I, that it is, seems to be the right thing for us to do too. Um, we've gotten Pat, we've kind of fought through our inertia for these first couple of weeks, now that we've got some, now that we're starting to get moving. Um, to kind of keep that up. So I, I agree that it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Member Mitchell.
I have nothing to add.
Member Mitchellowski.
I don't have anything to add.
Uh, do the students have anything they wish to add?
I just want to say that I know uh, from all of my fellow students that I've talked to. We are all in support of eliminating April break. We've already missed um, a lot of time. And so we, as uh, Dr. McCall mentioned earlier from um, the report he read, the article he read. Uh, a lot of us are missing being in school, and so I know we would enjoy going back and uh, starting and continuing next week. And also, uh, a question I had is what exactly would this mean for seniors? This was another thing that came up, uh, when I've been talking to some of my fellow students. Would we still be getting out on the same date, or would we now get out four days earlier if we did eliminate break?
So um, you will find that out very soon. So one of the things that we're doing is we're looking at how that's going to play out in terms of um, you know, the timeframe for that. So um, a- again, I know um, Deputy Burlow talked about uh, some of these details that will be coming out tomorrow. We're hoping to have all that back uh, to all of you, so that you have some way of planning out how things are going to work. Again, there's still talk about how um, graduation would occur, might occur, how, you know, when, where, how. So uh, you know, we're, we're looking at a, a lot of different options, but we want to be able to give you some details about that soon.
Good question.
Thank you.
Leah, do you have anything?
Uh, no, that was the questions that I had.
Member Long Belial.
I intend to support the motion. I think that uh, now that we have just started remote uh, learning required. It's important to keep our momentum up. I intend to support the motion.
Member Lavoy.
I intend to support it as well. I, I do hope that is part of. The look at the surveys, yes, they both were consistent at eighty-twenty, and I suspect that um. Given the eighty-twenty rule, that the twenty percent of individuals, both on the respondents from the parent side. As well as the teacher side are probably the people that might be impacted the most right now um, by the, by what's going on in the world. And I do think that it's super important that as we progress forward, that we keep an eye on that. Um, for every parent that I've heard from, um, that is encouraging and looking from that. I have um, had conversations with um, people that are disabled themselves. And are now at home with, with children that are um, on IEPs. And it's just impossible for um, those individuals to support their children in these times. And I suspect that there are more people that are also impacted directly by the events of right now. So I, I just, I think that it's important that we're moving forward. But when we survey that, we're in the business of education for all, right? And those twenty percent, um, there is going to be probably. This goes back to, I think, member Dennis's point on the previous um, piece, that there's going to be a, a gap there that we're going to have to look at. And it's not just for those twenty percent, but it might not be something we can solve immediately. But long, longer term, we have to have a vision going into next year as to what that looks like. So again, I'll support the motion, but I do think that that's an extremely um, important piece to move forward. Um, to have that vision, and I would just like to, to keep that in mind for administration as they think of that. And how they might get that feedback from those people that are impacted. And I suspect people that might not have been impacted today could be impacted tomorrow or next week. Given that we're kind of at the peak of, of what analysis says for COVID cases right now.
Thank you. Uh, member Kirshenbaum.
Uh, hi, I um, I agree with uh, member Lavoy and his comments there. I want to echo those. Um, I will be supporting this motion. I've gotten a lot of um, family feedback. I do appreciate having the data. It's nice to be able to know that the staff were surveyed. It's nice to be able to know that the parents were surveyed. I, my question um, that I have is um, of those, of the member families within the town. Um, do we have a percentage that did not respond? Do we know how many people are not responding in that capacity? Um, I just wonder how, you know, how those families are finding voice in, in this process. Um, so that's my only question there. Thank you.
So uh, I'll probably have to turn that question over to Barry, because he has the, the details associated with the numbers that go out. I do know that when I send a, a, a school messenger out, it goes out to seventeen thousand um, emails. And, you know, I'm not sure how this one plays out in terms of the direct survey information. Barry, can you answer that?
Yeah, and the seventeen thousand number that you see when you send out a message contains a lot of duplicates. Um, for uh, reasons that aren't worth getting into now. So um, it, it, this survey, like most of the surveys we do, was completely anonymous. So we really can't track the response rate. Um, but, you know, it's, when you get five thousand responses. Statistics say that it's going to be pretty representative.
Okay, great.
Okay, member Ember, I'm sorry I keep muting you, but whenever you're not unmuted, I get feedback through your, your line. But now, now you can be unmuted.
Anyways, I fully support the, the motion.
All right, member Haynes?
Thanks. All my points been made. I'll support the motion.
Member Haber?
I will also support the motion.
Member Gustafson?
Let's see if we can get this here.
Okay, sorry, I had to switch to my phone. I will support it because I think that data says a lot and reflects a lot of messages I've gotten. I did want to note, I have received a couple of messages that are in favor of not having break. And they're largely from families who have been under the kind of stress that member Lavoy mentioned, families that are, really haven't been doing, engaging in the work now because honestly, their families are stressed. They have multiple, they have parents working in hospitals. They have, some of them are divorced families, moving between households, parents working at home, limited amount of time, and also they're very concerned for their students' development. So I did want to echo that and make sure the voices are not lost in that process. 20%, is a fifth of our students that we know of. So I don't want to forget those voices. My question, I guess, is now that we've passed, in the memo of agreement, we'll be going forward, does that mean that the required remote learning will be starting next week? And if so, I guess, making sure that, given that we're making these changes at the same time, that we are, there's, there's, I guess, consideration for those families who have been not engaging in the work for various reasons and may struggle to do so next week. And we're not just taking away their, their planned break as well as requiring them to do things that they may not be able to do. So I just want to make sure that we are being receptive of that and understanding of that as we enforce our other new policies as well. So.
Daryl, do you want to address that?
Sure.
That I'm in favor of it because obviously the data speaks to that.
Exactly. So we are, and again, this is something where we're, we're actually looking to put this forward this week so that we have the opportunity to bring this into the kids' homes and into their lives at this stage of the game and not wait until next week. But, you know, if there are issues associated with students, and I think someone mentioned it, I think member Weeks mentioned it earlier, if somehow they were still planning on doing something of some sorts over April break, you know, we need to ensure that teachers know that they have to be flexible with what the kids may or may not be able to do during that time.
Member Godbell? Uh, no comment or questions. So sensible, fully support the motion as eager to move forward. Member Dennis?
Uh, thank you. So my intention to support the motion as well. You know, the one thing I'd offer is, you know, the memorandum of agreement that we just agreed to a little while ago, has a start date of tomorrow. You know, it seems to me that, you know, looking at next week is, is what was originally April vacation, that the timing would seem to, to be very appropriate to be able to offer, if we can, some kind of professional development that helps align on some best practices, you know, try to align across, you know, some grade levels in some shape or form, if we're able to do that. And even if it means, you know, an opportunity for some type of reduced load during those, those four days of, of time on now as opposed to time off, it just seems to me that if there's, there, there could be an opportunity here as we're moving into this, this, this shift into our remote learning plan. Thank you.
Member Brown? Scott?
Yeah, I am very glad that we had the survey with the teachers and the parents, and I support the motion. That's it.
Member Ayala?
Uh, yeah, I, I totally agree with member Lavoy and member Woodland and member Malia as well. I'm probably one of some of the 20% also. But I am going to support the majority of the motion. Thank you.
I, I personally, as a member, I was torn. You know, either way, I can see both, both sides of it. I do hope that throughout the process, all, all in all, that we have a bit of grace and forgiveness to, towards everyone, you know, teachers, to, to students, students to teachers, everyone to each other, because it's just, it's a difficult time. And this, my, my other, as a Mountview parent is still, we've got one extra day from Mountview that we have to make up. And did the superintendent, just, there was a follow-up question about if you had stated the end date for kindergarten that was still up in there?
So, um, oh, am I on? Okay. So, so in terms of kindergarten, it, it's really dependent upon whether or not we're, we're open in June. So those, those days were set aside for screening days for new kindergarten students coming up in the fall. So if we're not open, kindergarten will end at the same time as everyone else. If we are open, we'll end three days earlier.
Do other members have comments before we go to, to take a vote? Hearing, seeing none. Let's vote in the same order we talked. Member Young? I'm sorry. As a related question, I'm sorry, I'm going to stop the roll call just because I did ask for a question and it's a, it's a tough time. Leah, did you have a question?
My, yes, my one question was how this impacts Mountview and the other school that had an extra date makeup, and if that would be, still be needing to be made up or not.
Mountview still needs to be made up. They'll go a day later.
Thank you. I thought there was no school too, but that's fine. Okay.
The other school was just delayed. They weren't, didn't have the day off.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Member Young said yes. Member Woodland?
Uh, Woodland, yes.
Weeks?
Weeks, yes.
Smith?
Smith, yes.
Silva?
Silva, yes.
Atmar?
Atmar, yes.
Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Michalowski?
Yes.
Longleal?
Yes.
Lavoy?
Lavoy, yes.
Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Ember?
Ember, yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Haber?
Haber, yes.
Gustafson? We'll come back to Gustafson. Godbell? Godbell says yes. Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Brown?
Brown, yes.
Brown, yes. Ayala?
Ayala, yes.
Mills, yes. Gustafson? Gustafson is rejoined the meeting. Malia, your vote?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so that, that is everyone. So thank you all for that. The next item on the agenda, I hope to be brief, is the committee reports. The reason I wanted to put this on here is I wanted to give every committee chair a moment just to say what their plans are and to give committee members an opportunity to ask subcommittee chairs to consider things, not to discuss them tonight, but just to put things on the table that have to be on the table. I'll start with management. I don't plan for management to meet right away. I, I will send the subcommittee chairs a protocol from, from our council about our requirements for OML for doing subcommittee meetings. I think ideally, we would be having them all live streamed or, or on television. That's, that's the, the highest standard. That may be a lot of a standard to, to ask of ACTV. So we'll do our best to have regular meetings. To that end, we actually have only one more meeting on our, on our calendar, which I think is inappropriate. For the next meeting, I will bring a motion and people to, to set a meeting calendar for the rest of the year. I remember we of course would have had elections coming up soon and would have had one more meeting, elections and reorganization. Not all of our towns have announced their town election date yet. The ones to have is either the 22nd or the 29th of June. So you all are stuck with us and me until then. My plan would be to call, I, I'll want to hear what, what member Lavoy says under the goals and evaluation subcommittee. But, but if we're not doing the evaluation on the 30th, I like to move that meeting and I can just call it as a special meeting with a regular agenda to back to Monday, the 27th, just so we can be on an every other week cycle. At that meeting, I will ask for a motion to have meetings every other week. So that would be the 5th of, I mean, the 11th of May, the 26th of May, which is a Tuesday because the 25th is a federal holiday, the 8th of June, and then whenever, a couple days after the last town election is, to do a reorganization. I, I don't know exactly when all those elections are yet. If it was just holding, it would be the 24th, but I think one of our towns is the 29th. So we're going to have to have discussion with council about how we reorganize in the time if all the town elections aren't on the same day. Years ago, that's how it always was. So we'll figure it out. But my goal would be to have an every other week meeting per the request of the superintendent as well, so we can continue to have feedback. And hopefully, we can do some subcommittee work at the full committee level, especially for some of the smaller subcommittees, so we don't have to have quite so many separate meetings. And we can be more transparent to the public and on TV. That's really all I had for management. We haven't met. This is just basically chair's remarks. I'm sorry. Does anybody else from management or have any questions or input into that? Okay, seeing none. Bob, do you want to talk about education and what your plan is? I know you have a meeting scheduled. Member Ember? We'll come back to education. Oh, Bob, are you there? Okay.
Yeah, so I sent an email to Bob, and, and I'm hoping to set something up so we can work on some review of where we're going and, and what the plan is. But there's no, nothing definitive at this point.
So one thing I ask you to consider is the SOA. We'll have to get more information from the state about that. But, and then also curriculum going forward and, and things that have been raised tonight by, by member Dennis and others. Do others wish to put things on the table for education when they meet? Okay, I'm not hearing any. Thank you, Bob. Legal, Scott, do you have anything?
All right. Yeah, we have three unions that we are negotiating with, and I need to talk to administration and maybe Naomi on how to proceed with that. We started with two of them. And so I don't know if we can do it remotely, but their contracts end in June. And so we need to find out how we handle that going forward. That's it.
Okay, are there questions for, for Legal? Are we hearing none? Member Lavoy for evaluation and goals? Yes, I can.
Right. Can you hear me okay, Ken? All right. So we're going to probably, this is probably going to take longer than other subcommittee because I think it's, it's important to hear from members of, of the committee. So Rebecca had sent out a, a document today, and I'll get to that in a second. But typically, as an evaluation subcommittee at this point, or even a few weeks before this, we would have, and the intent is to continue to meet to do the following things. So we would typically work with Barry to develop the electronic submittal, the evaluation template that this committee would leverage. In that, in the, the meantime, the superintendent would compile and distribute his evidence for, for the evaluation. It would be in the intent of, of this sub, of the subcommittee to come to the full body of the subcommittee, of the full committee, and go over the evaluation template and the process behind it. And at that point, distribute that to the members of the, the full body to put together their individual evaluations. The subcommittee would then meet to compile those, those results. And it's typical that, that Ken, as chair of the, the full committee, would compile the composite evaluation. And that is the intent as, as chair of the subcommittee to continue down that. Back to management subcommittee and, and what you had mentioned, Ken, in terms of timing of meetings. So I think that that is fine every two weeks, but we're going to have to figure out how these potentially fit into, into, to that cadence. To the document that Rebecca had sent out, I think, as chair of the, of our subcommittee, we're looking for, or the subcommittee could use direction on two real key pieces of this. One being timing, and I think it's important to address that first. We typically, as a committee, do the composite evaluation of, of the superintendent prior to the reorganization. And what that means for, for us in this situation is, we know that town meetings have been pushed out towards the end of June. So do we set ourselves up to do an evaluation where every member of the committee that exists today has the ability to participate in that composite? The risk of not doing it in that time and pushing it beyond that date is, there could be changeover in our committee. Members on this might not be on the committee. And how do you then incorporate that into a, a composite evaluation? New members would be on. How do you incorporate that? So that's the first step, I think, is really a, a feeling from the committee. My gut tells me that we'd want to coincide with the, the town meetings and kind of that cadence and schedule. But I would want to hear from this committee first and foremost. And then I think the other piece is goals, and we can come back to that in a second. But I, I think it's worthy to, to at least hear if people object to that or think we should push it out, if there are any concerns that we as an evaluation subcommittee might want to consider in our next meeting.
So if people can essentially raise their hand through the chat, and then I'll recognize you, and you can make your statement out loud? Do members, at least members of the subcommittee want to start? Remember Weeks or remember Michalowski have input into this?
It's mine. Um, Ken, I haven't figured out my technological hand, so I have my analog hand.
Oh, yes.
So I just want to thank member Lavoy for being so thoughtful and reaching out in this manner. I think it's the right thing to do. My gut tells me we got to kind of move forward with the process with the committee that we have on hand. I think that's what's fair to the superintendent, and also it's what's fair to the members. I hate to be a new member to the committee and be evaluating someone that you really have no information about. I would also like to put out there for the whole committee to really consider when we start this process, you know, as we are now looking to grading our students through their work through March 15th, or whenever our last day of school was, do we now kind of evaluate the superintendent during that time period, his performance over his quarter one to three, because of the goals he submitted to us as a committee that we approved, were based on a traditional school model? And my gut would say yes. I think it would be unfair to now kind of bring in the scope of this ever-changing world. And I think we would behoove us to ask for him for evidence towards his goals and towards the standards that would apply through quarters one through three. And then to really take the summer to pause, let him to develop some new goals, which I think would, you know, his student learning goals probably will be around remote learning and PD and, and how do we tackle times of crises like these. But I think it would be unfair to evaluate him on this current time period. I'm sorry, being a little quacious.
So member Weeks, do you mind if I address that, Ken? Because I think it ties right into the next piece, which is goals that, that, and, and we can certainly have people raise hands on this. But the other piece of, of suggestions are, and I think this alludes to what member Weeks is getting to, is how do we as a committee evaluate the superintendent in a fair manner, given the situation that, that has happened? And I, I think what the recommendations that we've seen on, and one of the options from MASC is, And I think what the recommendations that we've seen on, and one of the options from MASC is when we're evaluating Dr. McCall or the superintendent, we're evaluating significant progress or whether they've met, whether he's met the goal. And one of the options, and I tend to think it's probably the most logical, because otherwise you have to really look at revising goals to say this would be the end result. The option that they suggest is looking at significant progress as met. So looking at the goal and knowing that if there's been significant progress is you, as an individual evaluator, having the ability to say significant progress has been met, but that being counted as met the goal, if that makes sense. So that's a piece that I would anticipate as an evaluation subcommittee. We would want to deliberate and bring back a recommendation to this committee. But I think, given the timeframe, I'd also want to hear what the superintendent, how he feels about that. But I think that that's a conversation that we can have in the subcommittee. So those were the two points to the full committee, timing and the way that we determine meeting a goal. The other options are, we could relook at all the goals and have to redo them. But that might be really not an option, given that we have associated these with standards by DESI, right? And we know that those standards exist, and we could always take those standards and apply them to anything that the superintendent has changed in terms of having to be responsible for through the COVID crisis.
There is another member of the committee. Do you have anything to add? I don't want to put you on the spot, but.
No, I don't. I just think it's important for us, as Matt said, to get feedback from the group at large. If there's anyone that has concerns about it, my preference is, as McNamara said, to try and get this done with the committee that we have seated now.
So does anyone want to raise their virtual hand or just start talking to, shout out loud, which is fine, too? I'm not seeing any virtual hands or hearing anything, which I take as a.
I have a question.
Yes. Yes. Go ahead.
Sorry, I'm not quick enough. So my only question, I guess, was from reading the document we received from MASC today. One of the things in that did, and I don't have all of the evaluation documents in front of me, so it's hard to address this. But one of the things in there did mention perhaps that some of the, although we wouldn't have to rewrite goals, would, how the superintendent performed during this process with things like communication, for example, which are part of the standards, is that fair to consider some of those in our overall evaluation, even though we're not rewriting goals because the standards kind of cover the entire year? And I only mention that because it was mentioned in the document, and I know that's one thing we've talked about in the past. And I don't have an answer or expect an answer, but it's a question. It doesn't require rewriting specific goals, but if you look at the different standards, theoretically, they apply throughout the entire year. So that's the question, and it was in the document that MASC sent out today as a possibility, so I just raised that as a question.
Yeah, and I think, I think one of the hopes of.
If it applies to some of the things.
Some of the, one of the hopes that we'd have as an evaluation subcommittee back to process would be when we're, you know, there'll obviously be discussion about this with full school committee. But as we evaluate, we develop the electronic evaluation form and present that to the full school committee at that meeting. I think that would be the appropriate time to also provide some direction as to how the standards could be considered in the individual evaluation for items that might not necessarily be directly related, directly written on the goals that we know the superintendent has spent his time working on in the past. And my feeling would be that it would behoove the superintendent and be in his best interest as he's writing and providing that evidence to be able to address some of that. Because I do truly think back to, you know, the goals that the world was turned upside down for everybody, right? And we don't have to be cognizant of that.
Yeah.
But as an evaluation subcommittee, we also have to look at, you know, what, when we're looking at the process of this and we're thinking about goals moving forward, that some goals moving forward might be impacted by goals only being, not having had a significant progress or being met. So yes, it's a yearly evaluation process, but I'm anticipating that some of the goals this year might flow into next year because of an impact as well. And we have to be cognizant of that as just the full school committee.
Just curious. Thank you.
Does anyone else want to jump in? Okay, I think that the subcommittee can take that on advisement and perhaps silence is acquiescence, I don't know, for this topic. But and for all subcommittee chairs, if you could just keep Rebecca and I in the loop for when we're scheduling, because we want to make sure we can do our best to see if we can get this on TV. All right, so I'm sorry, Member Dennis, I skipped a sort of important subcommittee.
Sure, no problem. I'm not sure if we want to hear this message that I'm about to deliver anyway, but I'll go ahead and deliver it. The next, I've called for a meeting of the Business Finance Subcommittee for this coming Monday, the 20th. Had the occasion earlier today to listen in, not to all, but the sum of the Economic Summit of the Ways and Means Committee at the state level. And there are a couple of things that I've heard that I thought was worth mentioning. There's a lot of numbers that were thrown around, but, you know, one was that there might be some estimate of a $4.5 billion with a B shortfall for the remainder of this year in tax collections and possibly a $5.5 billion shortfall for next year. You know, the other point to that is that they really don't, you're guessing at this point, but we really don't know what the impact is until the economy has essentially reopened about a month after that point, which could very well lead into the summer. So the budget planning process at the state level is under a lot of uncertainty, as we would expect. And that's going to lead to uncertainty for us in our district. You know, one thing is, I think, becoming clearer and clearer to me is that we need to be prepared for substantive changes from perhaps what we've experienced even this past year. And so the sole intention of our meeting on Monday is I've asked the administration to go through some contingency planning models so that we can understand what different scenarios might look like from a financial perspective and how, you know, at different levels of funding that may become available to us, what 1/12 budget and/or some portion of 1/12 budget looks like for us. And if there are different time triggers that need to be taken into account and thought about and perhaps acted upon, and there very well may be some time triggers that present themselves sooner than later. So it's a very important topic. I think it's a very important planning exercise for us to take. And the sooner that we start having these conversations about how we prepare ourselves for what's to come, the better position we'll be to deal with it for next year.
So Mike, clearly from a planning standpoint, it is a state holiday, the meeting day. Have you and Rebecca discussed the possibility of having this televised so other members can watch and we can avoid an OML by having members present at a subcommittee meeting?
So I believe Rebecca has been in touch with Holden Cable News to see if it can be televised. And we do anticipate having a quorum of the membership available.
Okay, thank you. Do members have questions or things to put on the table for Member Dennis?
Yeah, just one quick comment, please. I've talked to, we've heard from a couple of different towns, and this is exactly picking up on his, Mike's point about uncertainty. And I think four of the five towns have indicated in some way, shape, or form that they're uncomfortable with the budget that we passed on March 9th. And I've, and speaking directly to people from Rutland, the FinCom there, and explaining that we are revisiting the budget for next year in light of all that's happened. Even with that said, the fact is, is that the one that we approved is the one that's actually on the warrant currently for the town meetings. And so I'm just wondering if there's, I'm just wondering if there's something basically that we can do as a committee just to let the towns know that we hear that concern. I mean, that's really what I'm driving at, is I would like to let the towns know we hear the concerns, we understand what's going on, we're working on it. Even though the warrant says the budget that we approved a month ago, we are looking at it. We don't have the new one yet. That's coming. But I just, it seems like it would be worth our while to at least let those people who reach out to us to express their concern, let them know that we hear that and we're working on it.
Yeah, I think we hear that and we're working on it. The challenge will, of course, be building a budget as two sides, right? It's revenue and it's expenses, so we can probably adjust our expenses. Adjusting the revenue side is going to be hard in the short term, but I'm sure Member Dennis's subcommittee will address that.
I had a couple of questions, if it's okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
To that point that Member Haynes had mentioned, is there a process that we would revisit the budget that would be on the warrant prior to the warrant? Or, I mean, this is unprecedented, and I'm not sure if there would be a process that we would have the capability of doing that. That's the first question. And then the second question is understanding that the budget might look really different next year. I've seen some towns seeing some savings this year in their budgets in terms of just from the impact of COVID. I think there was an article today at the front page of The Telegram that talked about Worcester realizing substantial savings. And I'm not looking to downplay the impact next year, but are there any savings that we will see in this budget that we could potentially offset some anticipated expenses next year to get ahead of that? And that's more, not for an answer now, but just for consideration. Because I think the more we can get ahead of that, the less impact some of the reality that we're going to face downstream will, that we can get ahead of.
Sure. So Ken, I'm happy to address that. So they're good points. When I refer to, you know, time triggers, some that might be sooner rather than later, that's exactly what I mean. If there's opportunity for us to recognize savings in this year that can be carried forward into next year, we ought to be thinking very hard about that. To the question about the budget, I think it's tricky. I think it's very tricky for us to consider a different budget at this time, only because I don't know that our towns know what they're going to be able to afford. And so I think that even if we were to go in and say, just throwing a random number out there, let's say we reduced our budget by 3%, or 4%, or 5%. I don't know that our towns will feel comfortable enough to be in a position to recommend going forward with that at this point. And so it puts us at a little bit of a stalemate. And that's the revenue side that I think, Ken, or Chairman Mills, as I mentioned.
And in terms of process, Matt, Attorney Stilmer might be able to chip into there. I think we can, at some point, make a motion to reconsider when we're ready to do that, if it comes to that. I'd ask the superintendent, you know, and I could probably have done this math myself, if the earliest town meeting is the 22nd of June, we'd have to have 45 days, I believe is the law, 45 business days to give them the budget, because usually it's sterling, it's 45 days before sterling. Is that right, Daryl?
Yeah, I believe it is. I guess my question, though, Ken, and I'm trying to recall, we did lower the budget a couple of years ago, where we had a budget and then we came, you know, we had voted on it or we had presented it, then we came back and voted on it. Maybe that's a little different. But yeah, there has to be a 45-day window from that time that you vote on it to the end. We can lower a budget, but we can't go any higher than what we have right now. And I think, as Member Dennis said, I sat in on that meeting this morning, or the House Ways and Means conversation that occurred with several different experts from Massachusetts, just talking about the budget. And it is, it's pretty dire in terms of what we're going to be looking at. And I think the expectation is, we're not even sure there's going to be a state budget prior to July 1. So there could very well be 1/12 everywhere. So even if we have a budget and we lower it, we don't know where the towns are really going to be at that time.
That's what Jeff Wilson and the Commissioner said today, that they thought it was very likely that even the local districts were going to have a 1/12 budget.
Yes, they did. On that one as well today, you're right.
Well, that'll be an important conversation, an important subcommittee meeting. Is there anybody else who wants to put something on the table for Business and Finance?
I just have a question. I know we haven't discussed this at all yet, and it's probably not a priority right now. But I was wondering if there have been any plans or any discussions about people who have made payments for stuff that they aren't going to receive anymore, whether that be activities, field trips, anything that has gone to the district, and what is going to happen with that?
I can tell you that Director Deedee and I have had a conversation about that already. And if there are any activities where they're not going to occur, i.e. a field trip, a field day, something else, maybe an athletic activity that, you know, if school doesn't open again, we're not going to have athletics. So if someone has already paid their fee, those will be refunded to the families.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Ken, can I speak to that, to ask a question about that?
Sure.
Clarification. So I guess this goes back to finance. If I read the memorandum of understanding correctly, that anybody who had been hired to earn a stipend will continue to get that stipend regardless of whether or not the activity goes this spring. My understanding is that the fees that are paid to the district from families pay those stipends. Maybe I'm incorrect in that. So is that going to be a deficit that we're running on that, on those items?
Laura, that would not be, the fees are actually only cover the costs associated with transportation and the referees and so forth. The salaries pay for the coaching stipends and so forth. But, you know, we have looked at this in reference to spring sports. And as they've not taken on those activities yet, if spring sports did not happen, we would not pay those out.
Thank you.
Also, one more thing I forgot to mention. One thing that has come up recently with the seniors is they're wondering about parking. Now that they've paid for the whole year's worth of parking, a lot of them are concerned that they're not getting their year's worth out of it, but paid the full price.
That's a great question. I don't think that is a question that has been brought to my attention yet. We'll definitely take a look at it, whether or not it could be prorated or not, so we could look at getting some of that money back to you. Because again, those funds really help pay for the parking lot person who monitors all your parking. So I will talk to Director Deedee and Prince Will Biendo about that good question.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Hearing none. See if I can actually follow my agenda. Facilities and security. Adam, do you have anything, or any plans?
So we had one meeting that we canceled. It was a week or two ago since nobody's in the facilities and they didn't need security. And, you know, Dr. McCall and Director Deedee had a whole lot more on their plate at the time than meeting with us. As we move forward, we're definitely going to need to start looking at, you know, meetings towards the end of the year and then, you know, passing stuff over to the next committee. You know, as we reopen, facilities is actually going to be a pretty big deal, how we handle that reopening, things like that. So, but at this point. But at this point, we don't have anything scheduled, but we'll be looking to schedule something in the next several weeks.
One thing that's come to me, which is indirectly related, Daryl, just since it's on my brain, is, is, you know, retrieving belongings. As if the school year is canceled, you know, I don't know if this is something the committee needs, subcommittee needs to discuss, but there needs to be some plan, right, for, for, for that.
Yeah, that, that would be a great discussion point for the subcommittee because we would have to figure out a way to do that so that we were allowing kids to get anything out of their lockers. You know, I do know that, I mean, we've allowed students up at the high school to retrieve musical instruments and some of the middle schools. So the personal belongings and so forth, we want to ensure that we can get that, but we'll have a plan for that.
Yeah. And another member mentions medications too, if they weren't available that day to, to get medications from the school.
I do actually have a question for the bounds of facilities and security when it comes to cybersecurity, given that we're moving online. Do we need to bring that up and monitor that? I'm just looking at the amount of password management that each family is going to be required to maintain and what that does. I don't know if that's really realistic for our, our subcommittee or what, but that's been something that's been on my mind.
I mean, I, I think it's definitely something within our, within the realm of facilities and security. You know, and some, something we have addressed before. At the beginning of this year, we talked a lot about different abs, aspects of cybersecurity. So I think we should definitely consider that moving forward.
And this is Linda Long-Balil. I have a quick question following up on that, which is I've heard stories about Zoom bombing. And I know that we're using Google Hangouts and other, other modalities, but has any thought been given to making sure that teaching sessions aren't interrupted by hackers and people like that?
So they, they have Linda and Zoom actually came out with, I believe it was last week, and Barry, correct me if I'm wrong. The default setting now is that the person that invites everyone into the Zoom meeting, they actually have to invite each individual. So if, if you do it that way and you follow through with the default setting, then you aren't going to be susceptible to the, to the bombing. Most of our people use Google Hangouts in terms of the, the streaming video because it's built into the, the classroom. So.
But I, my question was, was the Google modalities, is there any, are, is there any, any protection against a similar kind of thing?
Google, Google isn't susceptible to that because again, you have to be invited into the, into the group chat.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, quickly audit advisory, Ben, anything? Remember Mitchell?
Just getting off the, no, we haven't, we haven't that yet. So that we have to, there was an audit that was in process and we just got to confirm where we are with that with Director Dee.
Thank you. The adduct subcommittee negotiate the superintendent's contract. We met last week, we're meeting an executive session next week to discuss this with the superintendent. We'll get back to the committee when we have something to share. The school council reports, I imagine there aren't many, but CPAC may, I apologize to CPAC if they're listening for taking their meeting night, night tonight. Does anybody have anything to report from the schools?
I did want to say, I'd be having CPAC, it's okay if things happen. I think they're working to reschedule it and we will post when they are able to do that. And they had a special fundraiser with a Rappel type drawing that Ms. Poe won. So that was an exciting thing. So they are still planning ahead for, you know, future, if we go back to school or events at the end of the year. I don't know the status of their wing ceremony. That's something they're trying to sort through right now. But I will send an update or they will send an update and I'll make sure you all know if there's anything to know with meetings, et cetera. So that's it.
Thank you.
This is Linda, the high school SIMCO was scheduled to meet tonight, but they also decided to postpone.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. That's another one of those long laundry list of things where SIMCOs are supposed to meet a certain number of times per year. And I guess they could do it remotely, but the principals might need some guidance in terms of what that looks like. Principals may appreciate a virtual SIMCO meeting too, as a way to gather some feedback from their communities. All right. So that brings us to our last, or our second to last agenda item, which is open meeting law complaints. So first off, Attorney Stoneberg is online. She received oral opinions from the Attorney General's Office and the State Ethics Commission regarding the role of committee members who are complainants and/or who are the subject of the complaint and committee proceedings involving these complaints. The Attorney General's Office indicated there is no limits under the OML for participation of the impacted members in the discussion and vote on the complaints. Because there could be an appearance of conflict, the complainants and the infill name of the complaint should file disclosure with the committee's clerk or secretary, which I did. First off, Attorney Stoneberg says that I should start the discussion by informing the committee that the committee will be discussing two open meeting law complaints. I should explain that under the regulations, the committee is required to review the complaint, prepare a written response to the complaint and send the complainant a written response and a description of any action the public body has taken to address the allegations in the complaint. The committee can delegate writing the response to the complaint to a committee member, staff member or counsel. My inclination would be to have counsel write it. A copy of the response should be sent to the complainant and to the attorney general. I'll turn it over to her in a moment. I will say that we will eventually take motions to either find that we believe an OML violation has occurred or not. And if it is yes, then we will take a motion to suggest, to suggest remediation of that. I intend, when we discuss the one that names me, to turn the chair's gavel over to the vice chair to let her facilitate that. Attorney Stoneberg, can we, doing them one at a time, so I can turn the gavel over? Can I turn the floor to you?
Yes. I must say that I, I homeschooled my grandson, first grader for three weeks. And it's much easier being a lawyer, much, much easier. There were two complaints. I'm going to deal with the first complaint. The first complaint dealt with deliberations outside of a regular meeting. And the open meeting law prohibits deliberation by school committee members away from public meetings. And the most common violation deals with email communications. And I can tell you that there are tons of these, tons of these in the, in the Attorney General's rulings. And also I've encountered many, many of these because email is a good way to communicate, but it is a problem. If one member expresses an opinion on a matter before the school committee to a majority of the school committee, even if there's no response, that's considered to be a deliberation. Any material that's submitted with an opinion about a matter that the school committee is going to consider is a deliberation. In the instant, the, the committee, even if it doesn't respond, merely the transmission of a report expressing in support of an opinion would violate the open meeting law. So a lot of times people will say, do not respond. That doesn't really cure the violation. The best advice I can give to committee members, and I give this advice a lot, is to avoid sending any emails discussing any matters before the school committee. You can send emails trying to figure out if you can meet at a certain night or some procedural issues. But anything the committee is discussing should not be the subject of an email. The, in the instant case, should, we'll just deal with the first one and then we'll go to the second one. In the instant case, there was concerns. Member Christine Smith raised concerns over an email that was sent by a member of the school committee discussing school choice and what had been submitting a report regarding school choice in support of his position. So that, basically that's it in a nutshell. And my recommendation would be that now that the school committee is fully informed as to what's permitted, is that as a remedy, which we have to come up with a remedy, is an agreement by all school committee members that they will not communicate on school committee policies or public matters through email.
Do we have to have a motion to have this discussion, Ms. Stoneberg, or?
You can have the discussion and then you can have a motion.
Would I have the ability to respond first? Is that, is that fair?
I think that, I think that would be appropriate, Ken.
Okay.
Can everybody hear me? Is that okay?
Yes, you have the floor, Matt. That's fine.
So thank you for providing me the, the opportunity to address. I will say, I appreciate Naomi giving us that direction because I was initially surprised when I read of this complaint. But I'm actually really glad that we're having this discussion in open forum. I do think that it is important that, I do recognize what Attorney Stoneberg says for advice. But the Attorney General has said that it is okay for one member of a public body to email a quorum to distribute documents created by a non-member to be discussed at a meeting as long as the member expresses no opinion about the document in their transmittal email. And having said that, that, that's open meeting law 2013-4, 2013-5, 2015-33. I'm not disputing her stance on that though. I just wanted to, to put that into account that when I initiated and sent those emails, I clearly made sure that my opinion was actually removed from those. I also want to bring up the point that when I.
Wait, I don't think you.
Hang on.
If you look at what you, go ahead.
I'm happy to address it. I can, you're, you're going to refer to the second email. And I'm happy to address that because I can furnish the original email where that was a conversation between Dr. McCall and myself about full, full day kindergarten. And I actually removed the first two sentences of that email. And one of those sentences said, in my opinion, and I removed that completely from that. So I would tell you that I made a concerted effort to review that, to remove that. But I do want to get back to your point about resolution because I think that there, I completely agree with there's a risk associated with emailing the body, even if it's for informational purposes. So I agree, and I do believe that it is in the best direction to probably distribute content through the secretary. But as I was looking for this, this conversation today, I do want to address this committee that the complaint was filed on 4/7 immediately after or the, after that email was received. Today is April 14th. An open meeting law gives us 31 days to, to nuke the complaint. And I just want to bring into the fact that everybody in this body received an email on March 14th from a state representative. And that went out to the entire school body, the school committee. That email was responded to by a member of the full school committee agreeing with the opinion of the state representative. I wasn't the one who responded to it. I would argue that that is actually a clear violation of open meeting law. I would also argue that on member, on March 24th, a member of this school committee, not myself, emailed this entire school committee with the quote, "I think we should implement this." And it referenced a, a program by another school district. To me, those are clear violations. So I just sit there and I wonder to myself why those would not have been reported or addressed. And it's pertinent to, to now know what we know about this, to actually take action on those two as well.
Can I just make a point?
Yeah.
Can I? Okay. My recommendation was I have explained to you what I believe the open meeting law requires. I have explained to you how frequently school committee members will think that they're not making an opinion, but they are submitting things to everyone, which I think is a dangerous thing to do over school committee matters. I suggest, if you accept my legal advice or recommendation, and you don't have to, I, I think in one of the instances, Matt, you referred to a statement that MASC made and this supported your position. That was in one of the emails. I just think that everybody does this. It's very common. And I think that moving forward, there should be a consensus on the part of the school committee that deliberations of this fashion will not take place. If Dr. McCall wants school committee members to have a report, it's perfectly appropriate for him to send it to them. So that would be my recommendation as opposed to going, well, this happened this time, this happened that time. If, if you decide to, if, if you file complaints on those, the only one who's going to benefit from that is the lawyers and I don't need the money. Okay? I mean, we have to know what, what the law is and follow it. That's all.
Hundred percent. And I'm just, I, I think that my, my point is that it, it was, like, I'm glad that you explained that in that capacity because I think it was, it's been common practice to share information and say, for information purposes, please do not reply. And I would, I would just leave a last point there that there was no reply to any of the emails that I sent that would constitute a deliberation. So I would, I would hang my hat on that and say that, sure, those emails were implied that constituted a deliberation. Then it would, it would really have a different leg or stance, but, but nothing was responded to.
Okay. And I would just say that if you look at the regulations, let me find it. If something is sent out to a quorum of a school committee member and you include material in support of a member's opinion on an issue would be considered, would, that would be considered by the committee, that would be a considered, considered a deliberation because it's an attempt to influence the opinion of other members of the committee on a matter before the committee.
I would argue, I would argue with you that the MSC material does not even impact the, the, their, their statement on school choice does not even impact a lot of the concerns of this district. They impact really the, the, the lower end of the financial spectrum. And our district is traditionally not impacted by that. It's actually part of an eight-page document by MSC, MASC. And if you look at, who put that together, it was not only MSC, it was in conjunction of superintendents, educators, et cetera. And nowhere did I reflect any of the opinions expressed by MASC in any deliberation.
But you submitted it to support your position.
I did not submit it to support a position. I submitted it.
Then why?
So why did I submit it? In the, in the meeting that occurred the night before, there was a request for more information. And part of that discussion was to feel free to submit additional information. And it wasn't to support a position or not. It was to submit information and part of that was a concern of, of where independent information would, would be. I mean, we take a lot of our directions from the Mass Association of School Committee. As chair of, of the Evaluation Subcommittee, that MSC article that we talked about tonight was shared to me by two other individuals of the school committee saying, are we going to take this direction or this? So it's not that they govern it, but they're.
Okay, well, it, it shouldn't be done by majority to ask people if they're going to support a certain position or take an item up.
Right. And I did not ask that anywhere in the email.
Okay.
So I, I'd like to, you know, you know, we can read the contents of the email if we want, I mean, but nowhere did it, it say, take a position.
Another member had a question, member, member Young can?
Yes.
I'm sure maybe it was a Member Young, sorry. Member Silva, did you have a question?
I was just wanting to make sure that we're clear because it got a little confusing for me. Basically, we can share information as long as we don't say, "In my opinion," what's the, like, if we don't find information, how do we share it with our, our school committee members?
You share it with your school committee members at a public meeting. That's how you're supposed to share information. Or the superintendent can send communications out to the school committee.
Member Young is raising his hand.
I mean, looking apart from, you know, what was inside this claim, I think it's an extremely good idea, moving forward, that any information that should go out to the entire committee, that a member feels should go out to the entire committee, should be sent, sorry, to Rebecca, copying Dr. McCall, and then have them send it out so it's-
Yes.
-who it's from. It's not tied to the opinion that that person expressed the night before and was, you know, if they say an opinion the night before, then it's assumed that anything they send out is following up on that opinion. So, you know, outside of anything else that happened, I think it's absolutely reasonable that the resolution to this should be that information doesn't get sent by a single member to the committee, it should go through a third party that is not a member of the committee. I think that's an easy way to do it, and something easy to implement.
That's an excellent suggestion.
Also, outside of this, I just, since I've been here for a long time, others might not remember, but we have a policy that does say that members are supposed to submit materials for consideration in advance, and through the, through the secretary would be fine, and not bring them just to the meeting. We had had issues in the past about members bringing information people hadn't read ahead of time to meetings and sharing them at the meeting of people I hadn't had a chance to read. So, so I, so just with, with Attorney Stoneberg, it said we could share them at a public meeting. I just caution members, we do have a policy that says it has to be shared ahead of time. If that's through the secretary, that's fine, but, but we do have a policy about that. Okay, so what do we do, Naomi?
Well, the first thing you have to consider is how you want to respond to this complaint. And I think there was a violation of the open meeting law by the email communication, and I think that if someone wants to make a motion to say there was a violation of the open meeting law, that's fine. And I would recommend as a remedy, I think what, Adam, is that, I think his suggestion is an excellent one.
Before we move on, a member has made a point of order, which I believe actually supersedes other parts of Roberts rules, to make a motion to extend. We have to extend to 10:30. We don't get the 15-minute options like we did in the, well, we incorrectly did in the past. So would a member like to make a motion to extend the meeting to 10:30? Member Weeks is raising-
I would like to make the motion to extend the meeting to 10:30.
I will second the motion.
Okay. I believe that motion is, is not debatable, so I will find my list because I don't have you memorized. Let's go alphabetical order, but let's start with Kerschenbaum. Laura?
Yes.
Lavoy. This is a motion to extend to 10:30.
Yes.
Long Belial?
Yes.
Mitchellowski?
Yes.
Mill Jess? Mitchell?
Yes.
Atmar?
Atmar, yes.
Silva?
Yes.
Smith?
Smith, yes.
Weeks?
Yes.
Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
Young?
Young, yes.
Ayala? Melissa? I'll come back. Ayala, yes, Brown? I think I might have saw Scott leave the meeting. Scott, Member Brown?
Brown, yes.
Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Godbout? Godbout says yes. Gustafson?
Yes.
Haber?
Yes.
Hayes, Haynes?
Yes.
I heard Imber say yes, so we are extended till 10:30. So we'll continue the conversation, I'm sorry for the interruption.
I would just like, I would just like to read from the complaint what the email statement was. The majority of the body last night did not have enough information to decide on school choice, or there was too much stress to make an informed decision. I have provided an article from MASC, the body we use to guide our policies, on their stance on school choice as an unfunded mandate. I mean, I think that's an opinion. It's not just sharing something from MASC, and I think that's the gravamen of the complaint.
Member Weeks raised your hand.
Yes, and I would like to kind of echo what Attorney Stoneberg has said. I do believe as well that that was an opinion by Member Lavoy. In some additional information, I was contacted privately by Member Lavoy after the meeting that I single-handedly was the one to make school choice happen for next year, and that he was, you know, and really further extending his opinions about school choice. And then the next morning, those email communications came forward. So in my opinion, that was a clear violation of OLM. I think we understand where his opinions were, and the further emails kind of, just kind of supported that opinion.
Remember Lavoy, were you going to speak before Member Weeks started? I apologize.
No, I, I think that, I, I recognize Attorney Stoneberg's positioning on that. I do, I do think that Member Young has a valid, a valid resolution. I do think when you do look at the document that MASC has in terms of their, their document on the unfunded mandates or underfunded mandates, and when you look at their actual position, that, that does not even apply to our district, it's more for informational purposes. So I would argue that we never even had the opportunity in that meeting to have an open deliberation for anybody to understand an opinion on, on school choice.
Member Silva raised her hand.
So what is the consequences of this violation? I know we're discussing it, but what does it really mean?
It means that you won't do it anymore, and maybe you could have some training.
Okay, thank you.
And I, and I think actually, this is very positive because this happens in a lot of school committees, particularly now where you can't really communicate face to face, and it's an issue that needs to be addressed, and the Attorney General is-
I think she hit the button that we all hit sometimes to exit inadvertently.
Yeah, I've, I've, I've done that like twice tonight. Let's give her a moment to-
I did it twice on our Subcommittee meeting the other night, and it's a feedback I would give to whoever developed this product to remove that button from there.
Or make it farther from the other buttons, at the very least.
Or a different color.
Yeah, I'll see if I can get Attorney Stoneberg.
Google is never wrong.
If they are, they're listening to us, and they're probably already fixing it right now.
I had to try and call Naomi, and I left the meeting. Okay, so Naomi is back, and that awkwardly placed hang-up button. Okay, so the question was, is there a motion on the floor? The answer to that is no. So we need somebody to make some motion.
Yeah, I wanted to, I don't know if this is the right language, so I wanted to make a motion to accept that an open meeting law violation had occurred, and do we have to also do a process or in the same motion? Can that be handled secondary to the acceptance of the OML violation?
Well, I think what you should say is you would find that the complaint has merit, and there was a violation of the open meeting law, and then in a separate motion, you could address the remedy.
Perfect. So I would like to, whatever Naomi just said, sorry, it's really late, confirm that a, a open meeting law violation did, did occur?
Yes.
I will second the motion.
That's been made and seconded, so is there discussion of the motion on the floor? Seeing none, we would take a roll call vote, since you're remote. I'll go back to doing this alphabetical. Member Ayala?
Yes.
Member Brown? Member Brown's left the meeting. Member Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Member Godbout? Godbout says yes in the chat. Member Gustafson?
Yes.
Member Haber?
Yes.
Member Haynes?
Yes.
Member Imber?
Yes.
Member Imber says yes in the chat. Member Kerschenbaum?
Kerschenbaum, yes.
Member Lavoy?
Restains.
Member Long Belial?
Yes.
Member Mitchellowski?
Yes.
Chair of stains, Mitchell?
Yes.
Atmar?
Atmar, yes.
Silva?
Yes.
Smith?
Smith, yes.
Member Weeks?
Yes.
Member Woodland?
Yes.
Member Young?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. The attorney recommends a second motion. Does anybody wish to make a second motion?
Adam, I think you framed it very nicely with-
So I'll, I'll make the motion. I make a motion that, moving forward, the committee follows the procedure that all materials sent out to the entire committee get sent through the committee secretary for distribution, so that it's not seen to be come from a specific member, and authorize Ken Mills to write up this recommendation on the form.
That's a motion, maybe we need a second.
I'll second that, Kerschenbaum.
Okay, is there a, is there a discussion about the motion on the floor? I guess my only conversation since my name was mentioned in it is that, is that I'm going to have to ask Attorney Stoneberg to draft that for me.
Well, you could direct legal counsel to prepare a response.
Yeah, that's not the motion on the floor, but-
Okay.
Just discussing it, I think that that would be acceptable if the response comes from you, but you get the input from counsel. I think that makes sense.
And I would, I would like to say, given the vote on the previous motion, I would find that this motion, for what it's worth, is, is a fair, is a fair way of looking at resolution. So I appreciate Member Young looking at it from that perspective.
Member Imber, did you have a comment? Member Imber put something in the- I'll take that as a no. So we'll do a, a roll call vote on this, again, starting-
Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, Bob, yes.
Yeah, the issue is just, the, the problem I have is in the, in the motion, I would put chair, not your name.
I'll, I'll see if Attorney Stoneberg affects with this. I don't think that would require a amendment because it seems as though it's more of a clerical issue, is that-
Right, that's correct.
Okay. Okay. So could the, could the secretary read back the motion with, with chair instead? Sorry, Rebecca, I took you on the spot there.
Okay, hold on a second. That moving forward, the committee follows the procedure that all materials go through, that all materials go to the entire committee that's sent through the school committee secretary for distribution, so not from a specific member, and to authorize the chair of the school committee to write up the recommendation.
Thank you, Rebecca.
So that's the motion on the floor. Are there other comments in the motion on the floor?
Just that I agree that the chair-
Okay.
-should be substituted for your name, Ken.
Just one point, I want to make it clear that, and I don't think we need to change in the motion, but I want to clarify that the secretary or the superintendent would send the report out. It wouldn't indicate that it was coming from a particular school committee member. But I think that's clear, Adam, in your motion.
Yeah, the, the motion.
Okay. All right, so then I'll take, unless there's more comments, I'll take a, a roll call vote on this motion, starting with Member Ayala alphabetically. Melissa?
Ayala, yes.
Brown? I'm sorry, Brown's left the meeting. Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Godbout? Godbout, yes. Gustafson?
Yes.
Haber?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Imber?
Yes.
Kerschenbaum?
Yes.
Lavoy?
Lavoy, yes.
Long Belial?
Yes.
Mitchellowski?
Yes.
Chair of stains, Mitchell?
Yes.
Atmar?
Atmar, yes.
Silva?
Yes.
Smith?
Smith, yes.
Weeks?
Yes.
Woodland?
Yes.
And Young?
Yes.
All right, so that is that part. I am going to allow, I'm going to pass my virtual gavel over to the vice chair since I was named in this. I might still mute you all occasionally to help her, since I'm the only one who can do that, but, but I will turn it over to Christina to run this part of the meeting.
Okay, so I suppose we're-
Kirschenbaum?
Yes.
Lavoy?
Lavoy, yes.
Long Belial?
Yes.
Michalowski?
Yes.
Chair abstains. Mitchell?
Yes.
Atmar?
Atmar, yes.
Silva?
Yes.
Smith?
Smith, yes.
Weeks?
Yes.
Woodland?
Yes.
And Young?
Yes.
All right, so that is that part. I am going to allow, I'm going to pass my virtual gavel over to the vice chair, since I was named in this. I might still mute you all occasionally to help her, since I'm the only one who can do that. But, but I will turn it over to Christina to run this part of the meeting.
Okay, so I suppose we're following the same procedure that we just followed with, with the first complaint in Good Evening, everyone. So I think if I could turn it over to you, Attorney Stoneberg, to hear your opinion on this complaint?
The, the second complaint involves an allegation that the Chair did not follow proper procedures by permitting the committee to vote on a secondary motion without following the appropriate procedures, I would presume under Robert's Rules of Order, that was not specifically stated in the complaint. And clearly, the open meeting law doesn't address parliamentary procedures or compliance with Robert's Rules of Order. It requires posting notices, it requires proper agenda, proper minutes, roll call votes in certain situations, public access to public meetings, and protocol for going into executive session. And in my judgment, there are no requirements regarding the way the Chair would consider motions. So I, I don't think that this complaint is valid.
Okay.
Under the open meeting law.
Okay.
It may be a concern to your procedures, but it did not violate the open meeting law.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And I don't know if we want to do, if Ken, you wanted an opportunity to say anything in light of what we just heard, just like you had given Matt an opportunity, or if you want to pass, your choice?
I mean, not, not for long. I, the, you know, I apologize, like, I've, if there was any improper Robert's Rules issues that went on, my intent was to make the motion be definite to a time forward. There were some technical glitches at that point, not that that's an excuse, it's just a reason. The, the Attorney Stoneberg has, has indicated that even if it was postponed indefinitely, we can bring that back at a future meeting. I said at that meeting, my intention was to put it on new business, old business, so that we could return to it, which we would, either April 27th or April 30th. So that is my, that was, was the intention, even if it was poorly executed.
Okay. All right. And then, as we did in the last complaint, we could, if there's anyone who wants to make any comment, you can, and then we can take a motion, or if someone wants to make a motion now on whether we think this is a valid complaint or not. So Ken, I think only you can see, I can't see if people, oh, I can see just through the chat, Adam has a comment.
I did, Matt raised his hand first.
Missed that. All right. So Matt? Yeah, I, I'd like to point out a couple of things that prompted this open meeting law complaint. And I reached out to the secretary of the school committee, and actually Ken, very early in the morning, the day after the meeting. And I was, my recollection of the meeting, because it hadn't yet to be posted on holding cable TV, was that there was some motion that came to, to the table. And I couldn't recall what the actual motion was. And I would argue that part of posting an agenda for open meeting law is to understand the motions that would be presented. And Robert's Rules of Order has a number of secondary motions, and there's actually three different ones. There is a motion to lay on the table, there is a motion to postpone definitely, and there is a motion to postpone indefinitely. In that morning, when I followed up, I looked on Member Weeks' school committee member Facebook page, and it's still there today. She states in there in her summary of the meeting that she made a motion to lay on the table. That has a completely different set of consequences, ranking, ways that you can reconsider, and ways that you could bring that up. I reached out to Rebecca Peterson at the same time and asked for the minutes from the meeting for the motion, and she was under the impression that it was to postpone indefinitely, which I then followed up with Attorney Stoneberg and Ken to kind of get a determination, because in Robert's Rules of Order, it's very, it's very subjective in terms of what indefinite means. And when I finally was able to watch the recording of the meeting, I realized that there was never a motion that was actually made. And the motion that Member Mills had suggested, or said this is the motion you're going to make, was a motion to postpone definitely. So I was in a situation where I didn't know what the next proper parliamentary process would be. So I would argue that the original agenda had a motion to vote on school choice. That motion was never, there was never a, a finalization of that, because another motion had been made, and that, that did not have anybody knowing what that motion was in open meeting law. And I would also argue that the original motion had a date time framed with it, that if no action is made, that a specific action is assumed by the receiving body of that. And by doing that, that would have real financial implications or, or situation. So it wasn't a, a motion to say that, that there was a process issue, it was a fact that there was a, an agenda where something would be discussed, and that was never concluded in terms of discussion. In that meeting, you'll notice on the minute where, if you recall, I left that meeting right at 10:01, because the conversation continued after 10 o'clock. And nobody motioned to extend that meeting. And that, that's a big problem, that, that there was a primary motion on the table that was never followed through. And the question then begins, when did that become, when did that become out of deliberation?
Well, under the open meeting law, there's no requirement that the agenda include the motions. The agenda must include the subject matters that are going to be discussed.
This agenda did include the motion, it did not include the subject matter, it included the.
It didn't include school choice, a discussion.
It included the actual motion.
But it discussed, it had school choice in it, correct?
Had the exact motion. I guess. Motion. So I know Adam's next.
Was there a discussion of school choice included on the agenda?
No. There's a discussion of the superintendent's report, which mentioned school choice.
Okay.
And that was never brought up in the superintendent's report. Furthermore, Member Mills later on said that he apologized for not bringing that up in that. So that led me to believe that it was purposely left off, and that this motion was somehow bypassed, that was on the agenda. So that's the basis of my complaint. It's not, it's not, but I feel there is a, an item on the agenda where it was bypassed in this manner. And it's a, if it's not an open meeting complaint, it's definitely either an ethics one, or an internal one of, of not following proper parliamentary process.
Well, sorry, Amy, go ahead.
I, I think Adam was before Amy, but.
Yeah, he is.
As we're thinking about remedy, if we end up, whatever we end up doing, what, just to summarize, what I'm hearing Matt talk about is more members needing to speak up during the actual meeting. And I think that's separate, if they find there's something not going on procedurally that's correct, rather than an open meeting law violation. So we've had times during meetings when members have said a point of order, or point of information, or I, this is not going well. And I think that's incumbent on all of us, in a meeting, you speak up in the meeting, rather than what is occurring at this moment. But Adam Young, you were next. Member Young?
Yep, thank you. So I have the unique viewpoint that I wasn't actually in the meeting at the time. I had to leave at about 9:15 that day. So I did go back and look at the meeting on the video. Reviewed the, the whole thing that came out in the complaint, after the complaint came out as well. Went back, looked at the agenda and everything. And as best I can tell, from what I saw in the video, is that there was, you know, Member Weeks went to make a motion. There was some confusion when Ken recognized that she wanted to make a motion. She started speaking to it, thinking she had made the motion. Ken stopped her, said, are you making the motion? She said, yes. And then continued to speak, considering she had made the motion. She was stopped again, because it needed to be seconded. So there's at least three people that were aware that a motion had been made. You know, Member Weeks, Member Mills, and I believe it was Carl Atmar who seconded it. And then it proceeded, and everybody voted on it. So everybody that voted on it thought that a motion had been made, because they were voting on. So, you know, it was, it was a little convoluted, because there were some technical glitches and people speaking over at the time. But, you know, I feel that Ken did a fairly good job of trying to navigate that. You know, in hindsight, maybe he could have done a little bit better, but that's what happens. You know, going back to the agenda, there was not a motion on the agenda. The agenda just said that there was recommendations requiring action by the school committee to determine school choice participation for the 2021 school year. So it wasn't a motion in the agenda. It was that we were going to determine what was going on with school choice. Member Weeks asked to, you know, move it to the future. That's what was voted on. So I make a motion to find that there was no open meeting law violation.
Second. Okay, so we have a second on that motion that there, so the motion is, your motion is there is no violation of open meeting law on this complaint? And we had a second. Is there any discussion? Anyone want, now I see people, their hands up. Do we still want to, is it to this, relevant to the motion? Okay, Member Michalowski?
No, I actually, I support the motion. And I just also have to say that as a member for a couple of years, having worked with Ken, I do think that it's very important for us to not in any way, and for, I have never known Ken to do anything except try to be an arbiter of equity, and not a voice, sometimes even of his own opinion, but just to move forward with what we need to discuss as a committee. And I think that it's wrong to insinuate that there was purposeful intent to deceive the committee. And I just want to make that statement on the record.
Thank you. Member Kirschenbaum, did you want to discuss the motion that was just made?
That was exactly the point that I wanted to make. I'm glad that Member Michalowski said that. I, I would support this motion, and I, and I do not believe that there was any malicious intent. And to say, to intimate otherwise, I think is incorrect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Member Atmar, did you want to speak to the motion?
So I did, this is maybe more of a clarifying question. So it, from everything that counsel had mentioned, it to, seems to be more parliamentary, perhaps a parliamentary mishap, could be a little more serious, but as opposed to something that would violate open meeting law. However, the question that I did have that Member Lavoy did raise, in regards to 10 o'clock comes, and we haven't adjourned our meeting, does our meeting, is our meeting actually adjourned? And if someone's talking at 10:01, is that outside of the meeting? And I don't know, that's why, that's a, maybe a question for counsel in regards to that. And I, I don't know if there were any discussions at 10:01, 10:02 regarding this motion, and so that it may be a moot point, but something for clarification. Then that was, that was kind of the question I had on, in regards to that.
So really, that question is, when does the meeting officially end? Is it at 10 o'clock, as in our bylaws, or when we have officially adjourned?
Correct. It's in the bylaws, and we were wrapping up our discussions on this at 10:01, then that would be a discussion outside of.
Yes.
Meeting, which then could be a violation of the open meeting law.
Right. Except, and German is also there. Yeah. Okay. All right. So we'll get back, we'll get to that. And it looks, thank you. And it looks like I skipped over, I'm so, so sorry. Member Gustafson, sorry?
Um, just.
Would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, I see the motion to extend first, so you can go to those, and then I will come back.
Oh, okay. So do we have, who, is there someone who would like to make a motion to extend? Member Weeks?
Yeah, so I'd like a motion to.
Okay, do we have a second? Who seconded? Oh, Kirschenbaum second. So we need to do a roll call vote. And unlike Ken, I don't have the listing in front of me. Maybe I can find in this email. So.
Can we give it back to Ken to do that? If he has the list?
Could we do that, Ken? Could you, could you step in to do that?
Members, Attorney Stoneberg, is that acceptable?
It's procedural, it's fine.
Okay.
And you've already filed the disclosure, so.
I have.
You're covered. You have a belt and suspenders.
And I had filed a disclosure as well, just so you all know. Okay.
Member Ayala?
Yes.
Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Godbout? He says yes. Gustafson?
Yes.
Haber?
Yes.
Haines?
Yes.
Imber? Imber says yes. Kirschenbaum?
Yes.
Lavoy?
I'm staying.
Long Belial?
Yes.
Michalowski?
Yes.
Mills, yes. Mitchell? Ben's gone. Atmar?
Yes.
Silva?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Weeks?
Yeah.
Woodland?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Okay, I'll turn it back to you, Christina.
Okay, thank you. So Member Gustafson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to comment that I actually had to re-watch the meeting to find the answer to a question someone asked me today, actually. And I looked carefully at that section, and immediately after the discussion that was called into question, Member Lavoy actually spoke and made a comment in the discussion immediately between the time he's talking about and the time we voted on it. So I would support the motion that there was no violation as well.
Okay. All right. Is there, I don't see anyone, thank you, I don't see anyone else in the listing. I see Member Weeks raising her hand, though. Yes, Member Weeks.
I just wanted to speak just for a minute, even though I'm not the subject of the complaint, I'm pretty much the subject of what happened in that moment. So just to speak briefly to my perspective, I was attempting to make a motion. It was late at night, and I was kind of fumbling over my words. So first, I support the motion on the table, and second, I wanted to say thank you to Chair Mills, not just for helping me craft that motion in the moment, but to helping all of us craft our motions. A lot of us are, you know, this school committing meetings are, were one time where we're making these type of statements in a formal manner. And I've been on the committee now for almost six years. And during those years, when Ken has been Chair, he has helped every single one of us in these moments. So I just wanted to thank him for his help, and to fully support the motion on the table.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? I think, Member Woodland?
Yes, hi. I just have a quick clarification. So when I click over to the chat section, it says that the messages are recorded. My recollection of the meeting was that all of the seconds and everything were run through in the chat. Is that not part of what's reviewable? Is that not, are we not able to access that timely, in a timely way? So that's just, I wanted to make sure that we are doing that part properly of putting things in the chat, if maybe that's not actually functional for open meeting. And that's all my question.
Yes, I'm, I'm not sure about that. I don't know if Member Mills wants to, if you know the technical aspects of that question or not?
I know they're recorded, I don't know the technical aspects of what they're good for.
So they are, so they're recorded somewhere, and they're distributed alongside the meeting, or people could access them somehow?
They're, you know, they're in a folder that you all, it's been shared with all of you. I don't know how or why that's the case, but when I went to look for the chat, they, they're in a folder that the committee has access to, a shared Google folder.
Okay.
I didn't ask for that to happen, it's just, that's where.
It might, yeah. It might be part of the recording. I know with, this is off topic, but on topic, with Zoom, it records, or with some programs, they just, with Google and such, they just have an integration, so it's probably saving it in a drive for us. Okay, so that's good to know. Is there anyone else who would like, oh, Member Lavoy? I just, a point of order and a question. It sounds to me as if many people on the committee feel as if a motion was made. And to my point earlier, there are three distinctly different motions that have different rankings in parliamentary process according to Robert's Rules of Order. They have different impacts, and that would be a motion to lay on the table, which is the motion that I saw. table, which is the motion that I saw on Member Weeks posting, a motion to postpone definitely, which is what Ken said the motion would be initially, and the motion to postpone indefinitely, which is what our secretary of the meeting had said. So I'm just point of order, just trying to figure out what motion was actually made.
So I guess for this complaint, that is not relevant at this point, although I understand your desire to want to know that, because we're looking at a complaint of open meeting law violation. And we have been told by counsel that parliamentary procedure is not a violation of open meeting law. So while I understand that, and it's something that we may have gotten mixed at the end of the meeting with the definitely indefinitely or whatever was going on, I'm not sure that's relevant to our question, our motion that we have on the table, which is, was there a violation of open meeting law? But it's a, a very important question as we move forward, and we want to look at our, our procedures, because that's what it sounds like. We might need to do a little work on our parliamentary procedure for all of us, I guess.
I guess my question is after this, after the vote, where do we go from here for recommended action? Because, I mean, I don't, I, I'm very concerned with, I, I do disagree that Member Young says that Member Weeks agreed to that motion. There was no agreement to it. I did ask for a transcript of the meeting, and there was no transcript of that. So I'm very adamant that if you watch, proper parliamentary process did not happen, even when a second was taken, a second should be taken when a motion is clearly articulated. And it didn't happen in that process. So my question is, where do we go from here on a school committee to address this?
So I don't have a, an answer for you right now, because I can't speak to the, for the committee, although I'm in that role where I could, but I'm not going to. Let me see, let's see what Member Dennis has to say. Member Dennis?
Through the Chair, I think, you know, I might suggest where, you know, where do we go from here, is that we take this discussion up as we review the minutes from the last meeting, which I presume would be at our next school committee meeting. And quite frankly, that's the time and place to have that discussion.
Okay. All right. Anyone else want to speak to the motion before we vote? Okay, so the motion, Rebecca, could you read it back, just so I don't get it wrong, on what our motion is? Thank you.
Very simple. Motion, no open meeting law violation.
All right. So we will do a roll call vote. And I know Ken doesn't want to do this, but Ken, would you, seeing you can, procedurally, will you read the names off for us? Please. Thank you.
Member Ayala?
Yes.
Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Godbout? Godbout? I'll pass the Godbout over. Gustafson?
Yes.
Haber?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Imber?
He voted yes.
Kirshenbaum?
Yes.
Lavoy? Longbalil?
Yes.
Mitchellowski?
Yes.
Mills abstains. Mitchell? Sorry, Ben's gone. Atmar?
Atmar, yes.
Silva?
Yes.
Smith?
Abstain.
Weeks?
Yes.
Woodland?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Okay, so Rebecca, could you give us the numbers on that? I'm on the votes? I just wasn't counting, but Rebecca, are you there? Okay.
14 favor, 3 abstentions.
Okay. So we had three abstentions and 14 people saying there was no violation of open meeting law complaint. Okay. So Ken, I will, thank you, Ken. I'll turn it back over to you.
Just a point of order to the question for Attorney Stoneberg, how do we communicate that?
If you would like, I will draft something for you to send to the complainant with a copy to the Attorney General. That's the procedure.
So that's the last item on the agenda. So the last item on the agenda is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded. So let's do that forward again. Ayala? Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Godbout? I think he's gone. Gustafson?
Yes.
Haber?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Imber? Imber says yes in the chat. Kirshenbaum?
Yes.
Lavoy? That seems to be gone. Longbalil?
Yes.
Mitchellowski?
Yes.
Mills, yes. Mitchell is gone. Atmar?
Atmar, yes.
Silva?
Yes.
Smith, yes.
Weeks?
Yes.
Woodland?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Okay, that's it. So we adjourned. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Great job.
Thanks.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you, Attorney.
Thanks, Ken.